This conference will now be recorded.
Justin's getting it done.
Did you look for your project from last year?
Give me mine.
I have like seven copies of the old.
But I got pennies, dude. Oh, I get the, I get the, I get the dollar I mess with all the kids.
Pass it around.
I get, I get the dollar I mess with all the kids with at school.
Brittany, even though it was one.
So I'll go up to like the concessions and I'll put it down and they'll be like.
I can't.
What's that?
I'm telling you right now, I have, look, these are all from like last year.
Oh, you live in town? Go get them. I think it's gonna be a few minutes later.
It's six thirty right now.
The new ones.
I don't have that.
And that's why I do it at the school is I have fun with the kids with it so that they actually.
Well, I've, I've printed whatever Twitter email, but it might just all went on eBay.
No, just, just a couple of copies.
Yeah.
Peter from August, you said I have. Ah.
So somewhere somehow.
This is the only one that's.
All right, it's disturbing paper.
It's like important to the, I mean, no other option for it.
But I'm gonna have to do it. You need to pay for it and then charge.
Yep.
Yeah, we leave and we go, we come.
You have it?
Yeah. Honestly, I can do another pair of. It's, it's bad. And it's underneath.
So she's either way or anywhere it is right now.
I ended up with a long one.
You what?
I ended up with a long one.
Inside.
Oh, I'm gonna take notes with.
Cause I dropped mine, I didn't see anything.
No.
Cause he called Brittany and said a car hit the building.
No.
Oh, ginger, cause that's what I heard when I left.
They said something about. They love baby stuff.
So I go over there, I was expecting to see a crash, you know, and I'm like, no.
No, were they in Nashville today?
That works. If somebody shows up.
In Nashville.
Their white line runs underneath.
Is it there? Yeah.
Are you? Oh, you had to be there.
Oh.
You guys, she's trying to BS me. We're still off.
No. Later. Let's get it.
The box is running late.
What time is it?
Your reservations.
Oh, it works. Go to first. Yeah. Is that what I'm supposed to do? Just give all the money to me.
No tip.
And do, I'll share.
So kind.
I totally almost screwed that through my nose. That would have hurt so bad.
Brittany, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Oh, whoops. Is that what she was late, did she cook it?
No, she got something out of the shop and she ended up having it flooded. And then went home and gave it a shower. I just had to leave him. That's why I was so hungry.
Brittany.
It was a buster because he had worms, totally hailing.
Tomorrow, yeah. Okay, that one we get. You'll have to return them, they're very valuable.
Um, what'd you say?
To get out of our house.
Oh, it was like, yeah, he didn't want to get in the car because that cone and.
It was a big health issue.
No, I left him drinks supposed to be there. That was great.
Hard, huh? She was a good one.
I was out of town when I left.
We missed the whole thing.
No.
Where were you? It wasn't raining.
Uh, in Bozeman.
That was good. I can get like a punch on each other.
Yeah, I do.
So parkour ball music covers and it took about two minutes. You were happy.
So you have everybody? For the planning board? All the more memories?
No, fine.
This one was a good one.
He goes, I had somebody come in and tell me that he wants to be on the planning board.
Dave?
Lyndon's seed.
He is.
He's on his letter.
How many do we have now? Does that make sense?
I think, I think, yeah.
So we're still looking for one more plus.
I've got a man who works for a utility company. He's almost retired.
He knows a lot about, I guess, like, he's been, I don't know, property dealers. Where.
You guys said you did your nails did the other day, was that you?
I did not, you're not, you're old man.
No, I just want a haircut.
Right.
I can't. I have to get there before the nail person shows up.
Cause he has his mouth.
I'll drop it.
Oh. Oh, but she starts at nine.
Right. I don't. I'm just amazed that kids are allowed it.
Yeah. Right? Generally, I'm guessing she's probably gonna get a.
They all probably have cancer.
Daycare or something.
Who does?
You need a haircut? I need a haircut.
Oh, I'm leaving so bad.
Saturday? No nails on Saturday.
There are.
I hope it will.
I don't think she works Fridays.
Really?
Yeah. Friday and Saturday.
I want that scheduled.
I know, right?
I, I'd rather have Monday off.
I have my life.
I just. I just want two days off. Just two days. In a row.
Right.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Maybe this winter. You'll be both seven days.
I haven't checked it out, you know, seven days.
Sure.
So.
I don't know.
I just got the first taste of a Friday in the office. It's awesome.
Doors? It's got a drain in it, doesn't it?
No.
It had a drain in it.
It had a drain in it.
I had to plug it. Plugged it, it's a sewer gap back now.
No. Well, that's right. You thought it stung in there before.
It's like those better.
Should have bleached the floors while I had the chance, man.
Just light it off, okay? Start crying. You don't deserve to be the dog house.
Dog house, maybe.
Dog pound.
It does smell a little doggyish. Like it's like this, it comes out of the.
The pores.
I'm sure it's in the insulation and all that.
What is? What's going on?
I think he's running a little late. Were we planning on being here for four hours anyways?
Yep.
Really?
It was not, I don't know.
Hi sunshine.
Brittany made me leave. Brittany made me go home.
Sorry. You parked behind me.
Yeah, they always have that one night. Maybe one night.
Everything in a fit's house.
Yeah.
Those are beautiful. Where'd you get those?
Last year's. I don't know. Here's a magnet.
That's why I was in the pencil water. I got her socks and her tickets. What did I toss the?
Is that for?
I have to.
Push it right? Stank my ass.
Whoa. Clock down.
It was a electrifying personality.
No, 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 it's that.
Yeah, we're good.
Hey, you got that. But I knew a clock in the budget.
I guess it was taped together.
It says the day it was painted there. It was taped together.
Did I? I know it didn't, I think the tape just finally gave out as well, didn't it?
There's tapes on every minute of the world, that's odd.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like, uh. It looks like somebody already tried to fix it once.
That's kind of sad.
So we're gonna, we're gonna be.
Do you see line item two twelve? Clock.
Do you have your table out?
Catering. Was that, was that, uh. Training room two. But it's like how to start a claim and then there's step one. Even like injury claims, right? Or they give you the wrong thing? But there should be a whole checklist of how to start, even if one of you guys gets hurt. Or like the flooding, all the pictures you're supposed to take.
Why is he here later?
So.
Oh, yeah, wow.
This one even kind of.
That was.
Do you have a special? As far as people.
Yeah, mine says, mine says.
All of that's kind of inherent, was it? That's where the insurance.
We've been kind of great good friends here lately.
Yeah, and I, I meant to give that to you when we went, cause it would have helped, cause it explains even the pictures you have to take for them and everything. Sorry. I know, I thought about it one night. Um, no, shouldn't have, but. Don't want me bending.
What happened? I missed something, sorry.
Slice.
Alan, you have on the slicer?
No, slicer, no, a knife, myself. Sharpen the knives and then I cut myself, always, never fails. Quit having Scotty do them, cause these are. None. I waited to go. But they cleaned it and I think it was infected.
Don't do that, that stuff sucks.
It was only day and a half, but I panicked. It's recent. It was my final.
Did you find it?
What's happening?
Yeah.
I forgot how long, I looked through a couple stacks. Yeah, I mentioned it.
Two.
Keep talking to me.
Thanks. So. Sort of wear a t-shirt. I need all type of setting out. It's made out of guitar strings.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
It's easy, wow, I like the laptop.
They don't want to see their kids.
It's not nifty, what's it made of?
Highlighter. I should have put highlighter in the last. It's only way. I told her, we were talking about zoning.
Yeah, yeah, because you guys had like a three hour long meeting at your house. She made her chips in it.
I had their card in. I was like, maybe you can turn us off. You were at all. We had to leave their items.
We were together for like three hours one night.
And then I got my, just put a match on. Do you please? I played bass. And I think please bring over. That was a real check. See, this is Meliodas. What is it saying again? Meliodas from definitely since. On Netflix? It's an anime, it's an anime.
Oh.
Uh, yeah. I've not watched that. I've seen them all.
No, it's quite.
Because of you or because you're a kid?
I'll blame it on the kids. Dude, like I have, I have my AOT, I have my T-shirt. Let's go. Shop store.
Start from here.
I thought I said I would do all of them for you and then I panicked to act. And I was like, shit, I said I would do. I did say I would do. Uh, sorry.
We have some over the news.
Have you read the first upstairs?
Oh, I have, yeah, yeah, talk about. What's up?
What we got?
The next, uh. Bunch of people, it's going to be numerous. Guess I can remind myself. I forgot the other meeting, tell Cory text me.
Just say it.
Yeah, that's crazy, right? Thursday Sunday, uh, as would you? Because our things are very busy. Sugar high was open now.
Everything in your hair now, baby.
She was, I don't know. She just sprayed it around.
I know. Do I work here with you?
I heard you had, I heard you had a flock.
I can't, I thought you were bringing it.
Oh.
My husband does. Well, that's why I just.
Starving. Like I had a whole pack of sandwiches by my room three days ago. Yeah, I didn't like it. Oh, standing there gonna stop. And I'm gonna make it.
Oh. How was it going at that? I wanted to cut.
Seriously?
I like to make the kids, being up, you have braids, you're going to, I was like.
I know, one day. Tony Wampe, she's like, oh my god, I'm in campus and they didn't tell me I have forty extra meals. You're gonna get hit.
And I said, the only reason I know it's up in campus is cause some mom called me yesterday and tried to pre-order her burger sandwich. I was like, I can't do that. I can't do that. And I'm not even gonna be there, I had to take my mom to, um, Bozeman to get her port out. So I was thinking, yeah, I'm not even gonna be there, so no way am I gonna pre-order lunches. Huh? I asked my new one if I can pay her to make that close campus, cause my house is entirely closed. I'm like, I don't wanna be on them. Two dollars is way better than the ten dollars you're willing to get. Thanks for this, guys.
Thank you.
This will make it much terrible. Karen made the coleslaw for us. I love coleslaw, mix it with meat. All of it. I'm like, I don't have time to do both.
Are those all garden fresh ingredients?
That storm was crazy.
Huh?
Not in my armor, you Cory.
Storm was crazy. Oh, and then a customer's vehicle had the windows tinted, running. Oh shit. And then I was, I was like, I'll just go to my. Then it hailed. I was like, this is. Now I can't because I'm so big. Cut it down to the barn when it started raining. Started like, oh hell no. Helen was at the park with friends. Who get me?
We all have our bikes.
How am I gonna get home?
No.
I'm like, who's on that? But it's Suzie.
Hi Suzie, you're missing out on food. Oh, she's training.
Where'd she have to go do that?
Training.
Aren't you back? She was at.
Helen.
Oh, for training?
Yeah. Can't prioritize here, like food is.
That Ellen.
What is it?
Other trainers than Calispa. That's a great. I know, I text him, I'm like, dude. Deadlines. It's every second. A little further away.
Remove the topic.
Do I need to forward it to you? I don't know, he doesn't.
Me too, I only read it for slide now.
Is it the one in Calispa? I will attest to that.
Because I'm eventually gonna go back and read it again.
It's like my seventy-five unopened emails currently. Maybe it's gonna be a weekend.
Only seventy-five.
I try to manage them every morning, but. I'm half a leg, I can read this. I don't know, it doesn't give like an agenda. It is the same stuff we've done all year, some of the other stuff.
Meat is totally different.
It is?
It is. Yeah, it's not.
Then it's gonna be totally different people, cause it's in a different part of the state.
That's true too. Well.
Where is it this year?
Calispa.
Um, you get a lot of big vendors. Um, the vendors all go to this one and set up a big vendor area. This one's gonna be geared more to legislative type stuff. At the state level.
Okay, all the stuff that they're about to go in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things that they're looking at and, um.
The mother-in-law speed's legal everywhere. Doesn't matter your zoning, that is on a bill or something. Doesn't matter if your HLA says no, your county says no.
I haven't had a chance to.
So I'll have those two sheets, the long ones.
He's cute.
Do we? It's just a different one.
Cause the other one is just mine, it's just a summary of what you have, my friend.
Oh, yours?
Flip back and forth.
Cory has it in his, he found it.
It's somewhere in there.
Yeah.
That one, I was, she was on my Uber. I have. I didn't bring any of my old ones, cause I was afraid I would mix them up with the new ones.
Where was this one in your packet?
Uh, like I should have started labeling, I mean, I know there's the date, but.
Revenue or expenditures.
It even says the print date at the top, so I did bring the, the newer ones of the old one.
Actually, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll look. You have all those on your, you have.
Oh wow, what kind of bread is this? Who made it?
It's zucchini bread.
It's amazing. Who made it? You did? Nobody wants anymore, please.
There it is.
Calendar?
At the end, just like the man said. Alright, where do we wanna start? How are we feeling about this? Do we have any like off the top questions? Maybe if we were any, kind of beforehand. I don't know, how are we gonna go through it?
Yeah, can you just over, how does that process work?
It's your first one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's painful. I don't remember what we did last year permit, like. Section by section.
Now with page one.
Section by section, I think we did.
Revenue, the expenditures. And then whatever, but.
Whatever. Let's do that. Start for revenue. Choking on a chip? Can't run away if you're choking, John can't give you the.
You can call it the one word, because he passed it, he passed it that.
Yeah.
You call it the honey lick if you want, or abdominal crust, which is supposed to. Like, you know.
I was coughing, he knew I was breathing.
She's talking, she breathing, we're good.
I was gonna say honey liquor, but I didn't think it was really appropriate, then you said it, so. Just made my day, John, thank you.
I am pleased, what can I say?
Alright, revenue, first sheet. Sixty-nine. About one more working out. So our total. So this is gonna be what you said the other night?
Oh.
So that's not inserted yet, so we're gonna have to do that. Yeah, figure out that guy. Figure out which one I go, go with there. Okay, so the first one, there's like a. Interesting question mark. Is in. Is line three, two, three, zero, zero, no, zero, one, one, zoning permits. And we have an empty. Spot there. Cause we're looking at in theory. The resolution to increase the fees. And then you have a guesstimate, how many here? Yeah, we're, well, we were looking at. Um, a thousand for zone change. Eight hundred for conditional use permit. Five hundred for variance. Two fifty for site permit that has sketch plans and three fifty per. Zoning. So that'll go up a lot. But I don't know if we're gonna have as many as we did last time and then. Exactly, cause you don't know, there's not that many empty lots anymore. Well, there's, yeah, it's kind of been slowing down. So. My magic ball is not that great, I'm trying to figure that one out, if we brought in ten last year. It depends on how quick it freezes probably, on foundation.
Or if it does.
Or if it doesn't like last year.
So site permit only going up fifty dollars? From two hundred to two fifty?
I'd have to look, get our notes from it. We have a lot already done. We have it all.
Yeah, we have it all written down, I didn't bring it, no, I forgot.
I have it in my backpack, I didn't know we were doing that, so. I have my backpack.
I'm only careful at home, I don't eat that.
Big trash. Professional services will be built back.
Professional services.
What? Well, that's kinda like off topic stuff. Hasn't that been to me? Yes. Well, yes and no, I think when you're talking about it, it's. It's gonna be a guesstimate in a while. Yeah. I need sticky notes. You grab some? I have my own pile of sticky notes. I have my own pile of sticky notes. So two fifty-one for one requiring a sketch plan review and three fifty for one requiring a site plan. And then fifty for fences, fifty for decks, garage one hundred and storage. Left at fifty and sign permits same same. We talked about actual man-hours and that pretty much evens out. And that's kind of the last thing. So. Revenue part, I don't think. I don't know that it's gonna change that. Even if you increase the fees, if the amount goes down, but that's, does it.
Yeah.
There's different things to keep looking into in that. I mean, kind of a continuous type thing. When you get over to your expenditure side, you're looking at like a thousand dollars.
So those expenditures shouldn't be as high.
Um, we, no, because we'll go back for professional services.
Yeah.
Which is where a lot of cost has been accrued.
Isn't Suzie Paul, ninety percent of the question? Or how?
Seventy.
So forty thousand on it, something fifty-seven probably.
Well, the fifty-seven is total, so yeah, but in her, just in wages. Forty-two thousand.
That's your long gender, that's fine, right?
Sorry.
That's okay. I kept thinking it was mine, I'm like.
I.
So last year's number was forty-five. I went two hundred percent over.
Wow.
I still think that number needs to be. Probably ten to twelve thousand. It's my best guesstimate. For revenue.
Yeah, I feel like it's gonna go up a bunch, but not really. The fees are just more, we have the annexations and stuff. Did we raise the price on that?
You did double that.
Yeah, so how much is that? Cause we're gonna have, won't that go in there or no?
Yeah, I'm sure it's right.
Is Riverside included in that? But I thought we were already too late on that.
They're, yeah.
They're, so they're already paid. What about the hospital?
They, they were in the new fees, I think it was like seventeen hundred dollars.
But they already paid too?
It's five hundred plus a hundred dollars per acre, I think is what. The new fees you guys chose, yeah.
Over a certain number of acres, isn't it? Over, over one acre?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But that's, I have no bad news. So.
So twelve thousand?
What, twelve thousand?
Yeah, empty line.
Or do you match what the two oh four is? So that would be. What is that roughly, nineteen or nine? That would be two teams. If you're two, if you're percentage.
Two hundred four times. Over.
So you would be at. But that's rep.
It's just doubled. So that's where you get your, that's where you get that nine thousand one hundred and sixty-five. All right, this is actuals. Where it says twenty-one, twenty-two, der, or like one, two, three, four columns over, that's actuals. For the year we just finished.
So yeah, if you're talking about revenue, it's still gonna be right in that ten to twelve, I think it's gonna slow. And if we're in revenue and we're off. We wanna be shoot low. Right?
Not be over.
You don't wanna overestimate how much you think you're gonna come in, because then we need to.
Expenditures.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So just make it the same, the ten, yeah?
Yeah.
Ten thousand?
Yeah. Alright, so that was the first. Alright, do we wanna go line by line? Okay.
He says yes.
Yes, okay. Real property taxes right off the bat. Are you gonna take over, whichever.
Those are mills. We get to levy. The levy mills.
A be voted mills.
No.
No. That's that.
So. A long sheet. That says tax levy requirements schedule, non-voted levies. So. Those figures. Like on the bottom, we get to levy ninety-nine point four-three mills this year. According to how the state calculates it out. Or you calculate it out from state. Information. So that. Put it to three hundred and fifty-nine thousand forty dollars. So that said amount is like divided out amongst levy funds. Which are general library, the planning board. Um, PBRs and health insurance.
So the planning board is gonna get, they get money?
Yeah, they only have a hundred and twenty-four dollars. So with what I was looking at, I checked into some of their expenditures, Nikki. Like we're gonna have to bring some training in.
Alright.
Nikki talked to.
This is planning and zoning, or combining those.
No, oh no, zoning is in general plan.
That's right. But they might.
Yes, well, I, I budgeted a training for them, but they could, they could combine if they want. But Forrest was, is willing to do some training with them. And then also if they get into a situation that they're looking at, um, a subdivision. Or something like that, um, I budgeted some professional help for them. To get, help get them room.
Yeah.
You know, these first things.
When do I get to start using that?
Know anything about.
Yeah.
So anyway, Forrest is on board to help with that as well. First column, the appropriations is, is what you're gonna see on these pages. In expenditures for those five funds.
Just like you said.
Um, I'll, I'll just keep going down, let Nikki eat.
I mean, I'm gonna need to check this account.
Okay, back to the revenue, this revenue budget sheet, that fifty-six thousand. That's a, well, the local co-op tax, the county charges that out, um, on vehicle registrations. And then depending, so it comes back to us, it's in our jurisdiction. We get a portion. Of that, so that comes with our tax money. And it does pretty well. That is used in the general fund for streets. Next one, um, licenses and permits. So we had a fee, we did the fee increase and these are in business licenses. So this is what Brittany and I came up with this estimation. That's what possibly would be coming in in revenue for business licenses. So it, it a little more than doubles. And you guys just decided on the ten thousand for the zoning. And the animals is, it's pretty. Much the same every year. We were down a little bit last year. But I think a lot of that is, is they didn't go out actually after people that didn't license.
Well, how long does a license last?
A year.
Okay. That's not when I got, I don't know.
Rabies shot lasts three years, but we have to come in every.
Oh, okay.
License tag.
I was thinking.
Usually a rabies shot.
Okay, next one down. When you see the blank columns, it's because those things just have gone away. We don't get them anymore.
There's no grant for a library, or is it, what was it, like a state thing or?
Karen gets those actually through, she goes in for the library grants now. So that would be fund twenty-two-twenty. So the rest area costs up, again, is state money. And what they said, they sent us, will send us this year is the eight thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars.
Thanks.
I think it went down because of COVID. I think they gave us more money that year because of COVID.
Um, yeah, last year it was this amount also. We used to get nine thousand.
Oh, that wasn't just COVID?
No, no, so it has dropped from what it was. You're gonna see when we get to expenditure. It dropped from nine thousand to the eighty-five, eighty-six, or last year we got eighty-seven, sixty-eight, so it's dropped a couple hundred more.
Again.
Right?
Wherever that's based off of.
In. No, in expenditures, you're gonna see that we're over. I think it's six, like six hundred and forty-three dollars, something like that. Um, so you'll have to make the decision if you want us to cut that. Insurance is not refundable, so that is something that the town picks up the property insurance. Which isn't a huge amount of money for the rest area. Um, but with the cleaning people and the way things have gone up in cost. The supplies, I mean, it, it's gonna take more than eighty-five, eighty-six to keep it open.
And are you guys service that? Cleaning?
Well, they hire.
Hire a cleaning person.
Somebody cleans it up, great, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, yes, community maintenance.
Oh, the sprinklers out.
No, I mean.
We just, just gonna take care of the building itself.
If we can tell them they have to pay it, I'm just kidding.
But it's.
Since they don't need gas for the winter.
It does.
Yeah.
But then there's always that perk of closing things as a double-edged sword. Cause when you open them, then you never know what you get. But then if you, that one, you have to eat it, so.
There's that one in, I feel like, there's the one in West Fork. And that's like the middle of the next major town. Why does ours have to be open all winter? That one's open all winter.
Yeah, the West Fork one.
Ours opens what, April sixteen?
And it's a truck plaza.
October fifteen, yeah.
Sixteen or fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, that'll be. It is what it is, if that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah, so I guess when you get to the expenditure, want to see what you wanna do. Um, next is lifeguard table and video gaming machines. That's money that comes in through the state. On revenues that they get.
That makes so much more sense.
From gambling?
From gambling.
It's only three hundred dollars though?
I think they do for the live, for the live games, yeah.
Oh, poker.
And then, yeah, the gaming machines, the machines, that's worth four thousand comes in.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's pretty much, that's a lot.
It doesn't seem like much, does it?
For how much those machines are there?
They keep the lion's share of that money.
Like, not if you have ever had to empty those.
It's just based on how many machines they have.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Uh, next one, state entitlement share. Years back, they throw, when they froze. Us being able to raise taxes. This is where MMI came in for us and they battled this out to get us some ex, town some extra money through legislation. So this derived from that. We can't, we can't raise our own taxes anymore, so. This is kind of a.
Set.
A way to, to get back and it increases slightly this year.
So, and what's it based off of?
The money they're taking.
The state, yeah, I meant, yeah, I mean, they're, they're retaining.
They're not like tax returns?
Yeah, we still. They're passing a few of the taxes back to us.
They're raising taxes, but we can't.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be somewhat there, actually.
Yeah, so we get, so, and this based on. Population.
A lot.
Uh, minds and fortune, sure, that's our court. And. I took it back up to, or kept it, took it back up to twenty thousand, because it got, now that we have two officers. We are having a lot more tickets come in. I do expect it to slow back down. No.
Have to work load it half. We actually get to go out new traffic stops and celebrate reports all day long.
So anyway, that is in anticipation of having more citations come into court. Rents and leases are based off of, still at the ambulance bay in the apartment. Oh, other miscellaneous. See off to the side, the school has started paying five thousand for the school resource officer. So five thousand of that seventy-five hundred is derived from that. And I wrote sixty-nine on this and. Totally spaced.
Like, what is that?
Oh, on the master plan or any grants or something?
No. I mean, you have to look back, because I just went totally blank.
No, that's weird.
But, no, that, it's a certain, it's, being such a certain number, it's something that's gonna come in. That we have the number.
That wasn't this, this was our line item, was it this year? No, that wasn't. The permissive for the, I'm not permissive, the. Um. Emergency milk, wasn't that?
Yes.
That is what that one is, because that's exactly that amount.
The two emergency meals.
That we applied for when the Lions Club. So that's coming in, that's what that one is.
We haven't spent that?
We haven't gotten it.
We haven't got it.
Yeah, it's spent, yeah. So, it's just.
It will be, be given back to the general fund basically, yeah, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, because that's where the camera went our total on the revenue.
I'm gonna ask a question. So the school resource officer doesn't go into police?
It candidly go back in the general.
Oh.
So.
Is there, is there?
And leases in general.
Right, but I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's just other items.
Yeah.
Is there any chance of that number going up?
Well, eventually.
Yeah, I like, I mean.
Yeah, we have a three-year agreement right now and then we'll renegotiate it after three years. I bet you don't want some.
Cool.
Alright, so if you wanna write emergency bills on this nine-one-one, that's what that one is. Remember that, or head tomorrow. Next one.
Our investment, uh, we've been getting higher earnings. But I kept it low because we don't know what the market's gonna do. So I just kept it at that level. I fully anticipate we're gonna go over a thousand. But. I was playing it safe. And then last on that, the twelve thousand four hundred is what water and sewer, um. Sent in for IT.
Is it IT, like sixteen thousand total?
Um, yeah, but I think we're looking at, this is, that includes equipment, everything in the IT budget. I think we're looking, having to look at new tower, new.
We're looking correct, we're looking at new tower because the construction on the north forty has blocked our line of sight for the communications and the water tower down. So we had to reroute everything and we have to get up higher in order to get over those buildings. So we put something taller up.
Is it?
Is it what?
Nothing, we go to expenditures, I guess, I don't know. This is still just.
Revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the plus thirteen-five-ninety-seven is. They have street bond money in water and. they have street bond money in water and sewer. I talked to the auditors, um, the amount that is in there, we've determined is, is part of the non-refundable street deposits that we've got, that people aren't getting their money back. So I'm gonna do a resolution to transfer those funds, which is roughly thirteen thousand, into the general fund. It will go into, um, the streets, the street fund for in the general fund. Um, we're gonna be able to use it for equipment.
We're looking at a plow, snowplows.
Cause- Next page, we don't have anymore.
Bloody rights.
So, yeah, and Karen, do you see we're remaining any mistakes on this?
I have some different numbers than, or you have different numbers up here than was on my spreadsheet, but it's not horribly different.
Okay.
Do you want? You have me saying, oh, that, or you just want me to write?
No, that, yeah, that, out loud is fine.
Okay, so, um, under the shared revenue, um, one oh four, two two one, unless you know something that I don't.
Um, yeah, I'm in revenue, I'm on the revenue side.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, one oh four, two two.
Thirty-three hundred, thirty-three thousand, line three-three-eight, zero-zero-zero, local shared revenue. It's not a huge difference. You have one oh five, two six four.
Uh-huh.
It's one oh four, two two one.
Okay.
And then, um, contributions, um, I had ten on my spreadsheet. You have eight-eight-two-one, ten is a closer estimate of.
Okay.
Okay, and that's for a total of one-five-eight, one-seven-four. Um, so this, this long sheet I passed out is just something I prepared for the library board. I intended to you guys, it's just a good summary of, um, where all the libraries account. It is, so the forty-three, three, thirty-two, we have six voted mills, and then six mills from the general fund. Uh, we get half a mill from the county, which is one oh four, two two one. And then the other miscellaneous revenue, um, is from state. And that is all summarized down here, but it's from state donations and, um, out-of-county card charges. Any questions? You're frowning, did I miss?
No, no, I'm just-
Okay. No worries.
I kinda go inward and I'm thinking.
Okay.
So, no, I don't.
Okay.
Um, this is the planning board we have. Right, planning board, so that twelve-six-thirty-eight would be the mills that I look to levy. To get the planning board up and running again. And then on the bottom, if you see the Montana Main Street Grant, we got that money in July, but I have to put it into this budget. It's already been spent. So it's an in and an out, but it's gotta be shown in the budget that we have that in.
In, yeah, into here and then straight back out.
And then it goes straight back out to Cushing Carroll as their final payment on the
Well, it's not a master plan.
Oh, oh, sorry. So we got a three-three-four, one-zero, and it's the Montana Main Street Grant for ten thousand.
Who put in for that?
I believe Lisa did. Right, so it came in and it's already gone out. So that takes you back down to the twelve-six-thirty-eight.
And what did that get used for?
I don't know.
Cushing to it all for the master plan. It was part of a contract. P E R S is the retirement fund, the public employee retirement services.
System.
System, whatever. Hi. Um, so you see levying taxes there, and then water and sewer being enterprise funds. Um, I calculate, it's calculated some wages. And so a percentage, whatever percentage of their wages, like most of the guys are thirty percent water, thirty percent sewer. So whatever that, we would pay into P E R S for the year is, I take thirty percent of what the town's gonna spend total P E R S for the year and charge that out as a inter-fund transfer. So I'll transfer it into the P E R S from water and sewer. So they-
Cause that's the enterprise fund, because they're the only, like, anybody that's paid out of water and sewer, I mean,
Brittany gets wages out of water and sewer, I get a few, and then the public works guys.
They're split between the general fund and the water and sewer.
So enterprise funds are set up that they they make their own money, they spend their own money. So, and it works the same way with the health insurance. So whatever percentage, yeah, of their wages, like Eric's thirty percent, so I would take that thirty percent. So that's where you see the seventeen-nine-twenty-four as an inter-fund operating, is a transfer. Same with health insurance. We didn't spend as much in health insurance, so I didn't have to, need to levy any new mill for, new mills for it. So with what we were able to do, what you'll see on the next page is permissible mills. What they had in operating their leftover cash. And the transfer was enough to cover the health insurance without levying any, any mills out of that calculation that I went over with you. So next page is called-
So where's the leftover money from last year? Go back to general fund?
It typically stays there, Kristi. If you look at this one, you'll see cash available was twenty-one-five-four-four.
Yeah.
And then that non-tax revenues is again would be what is figured from wage percentages. So that's a transfer in. And then on the next long page and on the next page of revenues, you're gonna see the permissible mills. I do a calculation from that, from the day that we started having health insurance. And then the state gives you a formula to use. And you can, you can levy that many more mills according to what the increase has been since the time the town started paying. So that came out to a hundred and thirty-two thousand twenty-two dollars. Street maintenance assessment, that is the townwide assessment that each lot is charged, um,
Maintenance district?
A maintenance fee, yeah, maintenance district. So we have some new this year, so I upped it a little bit. Um, we almost made the fifty thousand, but again, being conservative on that, but that's my figuring, we'll probably add a little more than that.
Is there, is there any way back to the health insurance? One, two, actually, like, take, when we're assessing employee wages, how, how can we turn those numbers, like for the health insurance, into a dollar amount? Or how do we quantify, like that?
You wanna see a breakdown of benefits and dollar, dollar amount of benefits?
Just to see what somebody, somebody's making an hour, and then you add this this health insurance benefit onto it.
Do you want all benefits or just health insurance?
Uh-
Sick vacation.
I guess, I guess, yeah, probably all of them, I think, would be good. I don't offer sick leave.
So, I mean, sick and vacation are benefits.
Oh, totally, yeah, yeah.
And we pay, we match P E R S. So I mean, yes, it can be done.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, when you're quantifying, like, what people are making an hour, and if we're able to get a, uh, get a cost of living analysis, or ultimately what people need to be making to make a livable wage here in town. I guess that's all I'm thinking about, and for, and for reevaluating people's wages that work through the town later, so.
Okay. Um, so we're to library trust fund. And we weren't getting any money off of CDs, so several years back, pulled those CDs, and they have, I think it's twenty-seven thousand? Right around there, it's a twenty-four, twenty-seven?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, it started at twenty, so whatever, like, it has accrued in ten years.
Anyway, this was just to get a higher interest rate for their money.
And that money was left over from when they built the new library, that was definitely a trust for a major event.
Yeah.
Furnace or, you know, something like that.
Do you know what the interest rate is?
Um, you know, I'd have to post STIP, and look, Corey, I, I don't bite off the top of my teeth. It's been low for a while.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure it's really low.
It's finally started climbing.
Has it?
It has.
One point five percent in my bank account.
Oh, no, we're getting better than that.
Stop.
We're good.
Man, I need your help with mine.
Shut down.
I'm trying, I can't even think of what the, my office lady moved it over.
Well, we're restricted on what we can invest also.
This is in a, in a regular bank, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have the CDs and they weren't doing daily.
Yeah.
And the money market is not good, so STIP, and STIP is insured. Over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the F D I C, we've got, we've got over a million in there. And, but it is insured. Okay, next one, police pension and training. This comes from the state also. I do a report in March showing expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. And we got fifty-two-hundred this year. It went up, which was very nice, so I stuck it at five thousand, again, not knowing it's not a set number until they send it to us. We don't, we don't know for sure what it'll be. Gas tax fund, you wanna extend gas tax fund to them? You want me to go?
Uh, I can do it, okay. So the gas tax is what they give us based on the amount of paved roads within town. And it went, we did get that number, that one said.
Yeah.
But it went down, it went down this year.
All the way.
We added
We added-
A mile and a half, and that dropped, so.
Yeah, why? Versus last year's, because of all the people traveling after COVID and stuff? Does that even bring into it?
No. I don't think so. I'm not, that's something I've never been real sure of how-
Don't copie on it, but I'm pretty sure the legislators took the money and put it somewhere else in part, I'm not sure they read that correctly. I'm not a hundred percent on that, so.
I wasn't sure, but I thought it was part of the-
Up there, and it got moved to something else to fund something else from hell on earth, so they took some of that money away.
A question for Kalispell Training.
I'm sure all the clerks wanna know. Okay, so that one we already know is that number.
Yeah. Um-
Okay, literally, why did our gas taxes go down, yep? Gas tax.
I love the theory.
The next is gas tax as well. It is a new one, Carthaus Bill four-seventy-three. And they sent us this number, so it is set to increase. I mean, it was set up that way that it will increase every year. So we did get an increase this year. About what, four thousand?
Yeah.
So these last two are strictly money for streets. But they are graded also. You can't buy equipment. In the gas, regular gas packs, you can pay wages. Um, but they're set up to do maintenance type work. Shifting lane, re-graveling, grading, top seal.
But that doesn't make any sense. You can't put it towards equipment, but if you don't have a grader that works, then you can't put it towards that. You could grade, but you can't top it towards a grader that works.
Anyhow, I'm sorry, what page was that called again? Is that the tree fund?
No, we were talking about the, uh, two pages, the gas tax.
Oh, gotcha, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
They can only put them towards repairing the streets, not towards equipment.
So you can pay somebody else to grade with that money?
Yeah. Wouldn't go very far.
Wouldn't go very far. I was like, that's anyway, huh?
Tree fund. And I'm never positive of what's gonna go on in the tree fund, but I put in, that you're putting in for the grant this year. We didn't get it last year. That seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars is a grant, is grant money from, from like Tree City U S A.
And that, uh, so we didn't get any grant money last year?
No. Got some donations.
I, I did, I sent, I sent a text asking her if she had done it. I know her bag, so I just assumed it was done.
No, we didn't get that.
So when does that-
We didn't get the money anyway.
When does that have to get done?
I don't know. I can't answer that, cause I never, don't really tree fund much. I mean, it was just done. So I don't know timing, I'm really sorry.
I think it's ridiculously early in the year. Didn't I see them like-
I'm thinking like March.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say, like, I saw it, like-
Maybe it goes to the end of the year, and
I wanna say that I saw it really early in the year, almost in January or February, and I was like, what is that? I don't know, this is on my first day.
I don't know what this is on my first day? Okay, so anyway, right now that's all I have going into there is our money.
Okay, I have an answer for your neural tax stuff. It's about to drop twenty-eight percent this, this fiscal year, so it's based off of twenty-twenty-one. Um, a big part of it was because of oil and gas production in Montana is significantly ground to a halt. Um, and because people during COVID were traveling less, so it's a combination of both, it was not the legislature. So it was just because the, the oil, a good portion of it comes from oil and gas production in the state. And since that completely shut down, that's where we lost a good portion of it.
Twenty-eight percent.
How much?
Twenty-eight percent, I thought.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's an article from the Legislative Energy and Telecommunications Committee, if you just Google- If you just Google Montana gas tax, um, the, Montana gas tax decrease, that's where it came up. So.
All right. Okay, next is the ARPA money. We still have two hundred and twenty five thousand we should be getting from Madison County that they have pledged to us. And then, um, I gotta talk to Great West again. In November, there's another round to go in for more ARPA money and they said they will be ready to help us with that in November to put in for some more funds, but I don't know that amount.
I, yeah, I know, well, I wasn't sure, so I guess where that's at is that's part of the water preliminary. As soon as Great West comes, not Great West, so Keith comes back, second week in September, that's the final number that they're missing and they're ready to do a work session in October that will give them kind of our direction for the last bit of the funds for that, that magic number that we're guessing on.
Yeah, so there's no way for us. At, at that point, when we know a number, we'll have to do a budget change to, and to add that, to add the revenue and the expenditures.
And then where does that go?
In somewhere.
Where?
We'll cover, we'll cover that when we hit the expenditures.
And this was a one time, ARPA is a one time.
Um, we've gotten to ARPA payments already. And again, I guess, Nikki, it's gonna be easier to look at it. I mean, knowing these numbers are money to come in, that we know is gonna come in. The sixty three four thirteen is you have to do some match funds. So for water projects, I'm looking to transfer that out of water into this fund, that sixty three four thirteen. That number, that number last year. Yes, but.
For a national project.
Yeah, I just, I just mirrored it for this year, cuz we're gonna have more money coming in and we're gonna have to do a match again, so it may change. It may change. Um, the COVID is done. Who cares? Special assessment debt. This was payments on S I D for when they paved Madison Avenue. All the people up there got together and petitioned the town to have Madison Avenue paved. So it still amazes me, it's been twenty years. Anyway, I made the last payment July one. So we are done with it. Yay!
Let's pave it all the way.
Well, what about vagrant street? Didn't they do the exact same thing?
Well, cuz it's not all the way paved.
Gotcha.
Oh, then the C I P fund. Years ago annually, the commission, um, voted to put five thousand a year into police curb replacement. So that amount is in there and then John Newey had some other stuff coming up, so out of his, or within his budget, he carted out another five thousand to put in there. So those, that's where those monies would come from. So if you, do you have the notes of like, if we're, on the bottom, it says Jan, PD, library? Okay, so those are amounts. The general fund has twenty nine thousand, three hundred and three dollars of cash in there. PD currently has fifteen thousand, so the TAM will take them up to twenty five. And the library has seventy five hundred.
That's your mark for new computers when that comes about.
Are you down a car right now? You are, right?
We are, um, so I'm driving Charger, cause man, it's a big old Charger. Hey, I have a Charger in uniform. D and D can't figure out what's wrong with it. They thought it was a fuel pump and they thought the fuel pump went bad again and they replaced it. Um, they, they're like, we don't know what's wrong with it. So I put the old Charger back into service, um, and yeah, we need another car, so. I'm currently looking, but used is hard to find right now.
Can you sell those and get anything for them? Or like?
So they have to go to auction, um, because they're worth more than fifty dollars. We have to follow state law on out of the souls of the property, so yes, we, we can sell it. Um, I'd like to see D and D at least get it running, because if it's running, we'll sell more, a lot more. But I told them it's not a rush at this point in time, so, um, you know, it, it is what it is, but.
Do you have to buy from that auction too?
I can buy from the auction, but, um.
State auctions.
It's not state. I will not buy a state car. I know what happens with those state cars. I'm a driving instructor for the police academy.
Oh, yeah.
We beat those state cars up before they go to auction, so there's no way I would touch a whole state car. Uh, but there are other, there are other auction sites, because it is, you know, I have one that I keep an eye on. Problem is, a lot of that's on the East Coast, so, uh, but right now the only two places that, uh, was called Uffits, in other words, they put the cages and everything else in for us, so I don't have to do, order all that stuff and do the work. They, there's only one in Oklahoma and one in Texas right now that, that even has stuff that's even remotely available right now. There's nothing around here used, it's not, I'm working on the sheriff's department, but I gotta kinda wait till maybe after the election, so we'll see where that goes. If I can get one of their older ones that they're retiring, cuz they tried to retire that, that's about a hundred thousand, which for a city car is not bad. I mean, you know, still driving that around, um, knowing that we'll have to put about five thousand dollars worth of, or amount into suspension, just because of the way they drive the cars.
Right.
But, I, you know, it's, I've got lots of options, but I need the money, I need the access there, it's like mine, won't be able to screw it up right now.
Yeah.
That's real.
Okay, next water. And again, these are our best guess of what we may receive for the year. With the new fees that are going into effect, I think these numbers will climb some.
Because it increases a percentage every year, right?
Was that?
Cause the rate increases a percentage every year.
Yeah, and then Brittany helped me, we got new fees in place.
Yeah. We do for old water sale and then the fees for just connect and reconnect and.
Delinquent fees.
Thank you.
I was like, delinquent fees. But do our, does the percentage go up?
Yes, it does.
And we're still one of the cheapest in the state of Montana.
Mm-hmm.
By far.
By far.
Hope we can't move them up any faster or.
No, that's what we're planning on doing.
Can we?
That's what we're, we're planning on doing.
I feel, I feel like I've been talking about it for so long.
Yes, you can.
You can only do a certain amount of the year also.
So we need to start opening into that for sure.
Gosh, I'm gonna try to drink less.
So, hold on, I have real water coming down. They're free.
Wow, you're the best.
Holy, when you talk to the rulers.
I was like, on my line, I don't promise that I don't judge.
So Ginger, is miscellaneous water? What is that? Is that like?
Uh.
Miscellaneous?
I think s.
Cause there's also miscellaneous sewer?
Right.
So I'm just curious.
You know what? I have to actually go.
Cause I've been wondering like, with the fees, you know, where should they be going? But I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Yeah, well, I have to pull up, I'll pull a detailed ledger query on it and see what, see exactly what came in. Off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I was just, yeah, I've always wondered when I.
Right?
Do not recognize the word.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you split them like based on what they?
No, because that's wage management.
I, that's what I was saying, yeah, but why would that?
Yeah, I have not been because like.
You could, like a delinquent sewer is based in their tier, right? You wouldn't split that delinquent fee between the two accounts.
Well, for the percentage, for the two percent, it does.
Well, the two percent, but for like a delinquent, you wouldn't.
No, the two percent delinquent fee is ten dollars plus two percent.
Worth it.
So for the two percent, it does, but for the ten dollars, I've just been putting it under water because I'll say I'm just putting it under.
That makes five dollars.
Delicious.
My thought is at the end of the day, it all came from water in the first place.
Right?
At some point, and, you know, so I can do it differently, but, yeah.
So it would go, that would really go back into like a metered water sale or?
Well, but it's not a sale.
We want them to keep the metered water sales what they are.
Gotcha.
Keep them as, as what is put in for metered.
So miscellaneous, I'm thinking is also gonna be like, we charge fifty dollars if someone asks to have their water rob them and then back, you know.
We need to look at the U D A accounting to see what.
See how it's coded.
Yeah.
And I, I did, last time I actually had them on the phone and had to pull it up and they are the same, like the. Anyway.
The same account number?
Different funds, same account.
Account number, okay. Okay.
But.
So anyway, water and sewer, those are both pretty much just our estimates of what we think. You know, as we investigate and, and see where they're going, these numbers could change. But they would only go up or increase. Ambulance is no longer, so you have nothing there. Math towns, last page. Each town puts in two thousand dollars each year into this math towns agreement. I don't know if you've heard Eric talk about it a lot, but it's Twin, Sheridan, B C and Emmett. And they get, they buy different equipment that they share back and forth with each other and, I think a, kind of a nice perk to it is if another town needs help, we can send one of our guys or they can send one of theirs to us for assistance.
Everybody's really cool about it, I don't know about nothing, but I'll come out this math town, so.
All right, that is the end of.
All right.
Now, tell me six one dollars.
Yeah, we're gonna make a break and we'll do it later. I can't believe I'm so hot.
No, I can't remember what it's like.
Would you like my vest to go with that?
I'm like, I need a break.
Someday.
Before we all leave.
Are we taking a break?
We're just taking a break now.
Bucket the water out of my house.
What? I had to put a bucket up at my shop to catch the rainwater. It only went like straight onto the branding snap on tools.
Are you recording this drill at my car?
Eric's tough gutter drew a water on some way.
What? Got gutters now, I miss cut.
No, I don't know how you're, you're a big sweat.
I hope, I've got a nice swimming pool going on.
You got that off your head, too.
Ooh, rainbow. I'm getting rouge.
I did.
I was there.
No, I've counted been there for hours. Oh, no, I'm not. So, you know, like.
I'm just eating this fruit that's really, really good.
Oh. Well, I was, I was thinking it was honey, I was like.
Hello. But they didn't have any, so.
There you go.
So.
Oh, God.
This is really good bread.
What's that?
Really good bread.
Thank you.
You got your ops.
Um, with three different flavors is this? I'm not gonna say. Are you different flavors? Ain't not gonna move it to the mother?
Okay, I'm already big, I'm just gonna do it. Fuck it. Fine, I need it for the onboard baby too. There's definitely a drought now, yeah, that's bad.
Percent excessive drinking by Kelly.
I always wonder though how they, how they quantify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you? Ever tell me, what is it? A percent of that?
Uh, it just says percent excessive drinking by Kelly.
Oh, I'm just seeing what's going on.
So Montana's just gonna be big, well, I know Wisconsin's big dark.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure, uh, Montana should just be about big dark.
You, you, oh, this must be a joke, cause Utah's completely white.
Well, you know why? Mormon.
Yeah, I know.
I, I mean, so that, of course, they don't admit they drink.
Right, so they don't have problem at, at all, according to this, so.
Two percent. My, my, my wife was most former LDS. What's that? That's how she raised, yeah.
Cause it rained.
Hail too.
So much hail.
But he says, I'll check.
Yeah.
I watched it all. Through the window, while Joey was on FaceTime.
Who's shooting up with lighter?
I got down before that shit came. They got Cory texting me and said something about the meeting, I would've totally forgot.
Are you being serious?
Uh-huh.
I was asking you what it was.
Yeah, thanks, bud. Why are you calling one of your? The computer system.
What's that?
No, it's sorry.
Caller one.
Uh, so that's somebody calling from a phone.
Who'd wanna listen to all this from a phone?
So, cause the meetings have a directly on the phone number, you can call just like a, a hundred number, a local number.
I've done it before. Like the county meetings, I would just call from my phone.
Can't do that anymore.
Yep, school board.
Why?
They didn't let them.
Hey. Cut them off. Fine.
Voted against it, same with.
Sketchy. I don't know what other, like.
School board did it too, I think.
Yeah, sketchy.
It's crazy to me. It's not fair to people that have to be like.
You want transparency, that's, that's the way to do it.
I know, and if you have to, like, I have to be at these meetings to go to the planning board, the county planning board meetings, when all of first couple's going there, to go to the county congressional meetings, cuz I was trying to learn, to go to the school board meetings, to the school bond committee, that's impossible if you can't call in. I'd be at a meeting every freaking night. I fought with the school board over it too. I was like, no, just. Turn off comedy.
But see, well, see what Blake did, and he put down, when he gave the order to do this, it was, we're not going to do the chat box. We're only doing live video comments from the video.
That's what all of them should be.
And, and that was the school's complaint, was there's too much stuff coming to the chat box.
Well, they're all on their computer too.
So just, yeah, so just don't, whatever, just stay off the chat box and you're fine. They wanna come in, they come in, you know, just like anybody else comes in and they can make their comment.
Yeah.
Supposedly in this new version, we can actually disable the chat box, so I have to figure out how to do that. I haven't done it yet.
I felt, I felt like.
Sometimes the school board meeting chat box was very entertaining.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More distractions.
Yeah, it's something.
I don't. The chat box just kinda remembers me when I used to watch Facebook, you know, the, the comments that would fly up all over there, so.
Keyboard warriors. I got kicked off the rants page, though.
I haven't been on Facebook except to do towns and the, and the PDs and the M P S two year now. Boy, it's been nice.
They kicked me off when they started talking about me. They kicked me off when they started talking about me.
I hate to hear about that page.
Tagger baby, all of it gets you.
Blush pressure up. Makes you feel worse.
So many uneducated comments that you just look at and just like, really? It's public information, you're, how can you do that far off base? Google will find it for you with five sites.
I didn't turn out?
Yes, the rain was fall, I was working.
Oh, I can't, there was really a debate today? I thought it was a joke. And then I saw, uh, my friend Matt snapshotted Gianforte there with the horses, so he was really around, so.
Yeah, I got a, I got a bunch of complaints about them on the triangle out there that they're protesting out there, I'm like, Joe Biden, political signs, nope, have a great day, they're not interfering traffic, guys, have a great day.
Was it a protest?
No, they were, they were politicking for one of the, I forget which one, for one of the candidates, it was that library meeting or whatever today.
There was a, a debate.
Yeah, um, and they were, they were out on the triangle with their signs and just, you know, just waving with the arrow pointing down, pointing down towards the library and. That's your, that's your constitutional right to do, to do that, have a good freaking time, don't interfere with traffic, I'm good with it, don't break any criminal laws, I'm good with it. Have a good time, and they, they were, they were all respectful and fine. But I got a bunch of calls from people.
People have no lives.
Not, no little town, like guys, that's political, so we're not touching out of the ten foot pole.
With, uh. Adita and her neighbor, um, so she put a fence up and she wants to stay in the other side of his side. If I go stay in it, is that technically not bringing the T P O?
So she can do whatever she wants.
She can go stay in it?
She, she has, so he can't have contact with her.
But to go stay in it, be on his side, to stay in the backside?
You can't go on his property without his permission.
So even if I do it, I gotta go?
You can't go on his property without his permission.
So if I stay in the backside, I gotta go ask him? But don't you think a third party should do it, not her?
I, yeah.
But we, she was scared she should contact you first, I could just go over and ask.
You go over and ask.
Okay, cause he doesn't know me, he doesn't know my pride.
And he says, yes, fine, we're good, I mean, I would think just from a perspective that if I was on the other side of that, I would like to see a nice stained fence rather than.
Well, rot is fast, yeah.
But he has the right to say no because you're on his property.
Okay.
Well, I'm enjoying the rain.
The bread? I split her second piece. Jimmy and Cory, I didn't give us each a piece. But we did have one and a half.
Yeah, they don't have B U. But I knew like if I didn't change before I came over, cause there was a vehicle with all the windows down, we could throw it out there.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm gonna be steamy.
Yeah, it's okay, I know, it is what it is.
I showered for you, I smell like, I still smell like paint thinner though.
Paint thinner?
I'm staying in a house. Probably in this thing.
Yep, yep. Yep, my bandage smells like paint thinner.
The other day I had brown stain all over the back of my arm and I thought I cleaned up good, and then I went to this dinner party for seventy per, per day and it was all over. I was like, what you do?
My hair, dig through it, I knew this was gonna be long.
Something's on the wall.
Okay.
Routine.
Eric, ketchup, general fund. Alright, expenditures, salaries and wages.
I'll explain the next line, compensated absence.
Sick pay.
Those, what's that?
Sick pay?
No.
Sick vacation, it, it's what an employee has accumulated. So I run a report at the end of the year that shows what they have accumulated and again, break it up according to, um, percentage in that actual account. So that's what those compensated absences are.
Cuts off, right? Did we determine that a couple of years ago, that like you have to use it when you have it?
Unless you're denied.
But I can't keep rolling over.
Yeah, use it or lose it.
You put in for time and you're denied.
It's denied, it continues to roll.
If you put it like.
If you put in for vacation and it's denied, they can't take it away. You can't, it, it's not a use it or lose it thing.
Who denies it?
Yep.
Why you gotta be mean?
Right, I'm taking vacation on the court. You can see how that works.
I mean, common sense says nobody would ask to take it.
Some, sometimes, yes, the mayor's gonna have to say, no, I'm sorry.
I'm the mean mom, sometimes, it's.
You know, when, when the whole town was called cruise, you know, somebody's gotta say no at home.
I got a denied stamp just for that reason. I did.
That's the best thing I ever bought.
I know. Oh, okay, so that's absence, uh, employer contributions. My ruler, I knew I was gonna need it. Employer contribution, that's.
Two twelve is dropped down to the bottom to buy you guys Chromebooks.
Damn, and when do we get those?
Oh yeah.
When you pass the budget?
When we pass the budget, so the, the, and that was like a budget back and forth, cause. We pay per page ten cents or whatever to the login or whatever that is, so I was hoping that maybe if we had. Those, you're not paying quite seven hundred dollars a month.
So, the, the, here's, here's my thought as I, we pay, now we have to pay for all of our email addresses, which is not cheap per month. However, with those email addresses having to pay for those, we get a whole bunch of features from Google. Including Google Drive, Docs, the, the spreadsheets, all of that stuff. So we can easily, when stuff comes up for the commission, for everything else, they can just be put in the shared drive and then everybody has access to them. You don't have to come over here, pick up your paperwork, you just open up your Chromebook, boom, all your stuff is just right there for you.
Why do you have to pay now?
Why, why?
We hit our limit.
Twenty dollars a month for the Google.
Why? Why?
Because Google got rid of their free service.
Even my Google Business, it redirects me to somewhere else and there's not an app to download Google Business anymore.
They changed, they changed, they took all that away, they took all the free, uh, there's currently a bunch of lawsuits going on because Google said that if you got on before the date, which we did, that's why we had it for free for so long. If you got on beforehand, that Google would never, would never go away, you'd be fine, you know, it would never, well, they took it away, there's a bunch of lawsuits, some in California that, the ones that they actually.
They call probably five times a day that you need to claim your Google listing.
Yeah.
It's not paying money. Just hang up.
Yeah.
Somebody answered the phone here. Somebody answered.
Alright, guys, I'm gonna ask you to look at, like, look at these numbers in each of these accounting things and see if you have questions.
Training services?
Four.
Where are you at? Three.
Oh, three.
Are we still on admin, yeah, three eighty?
Okay. Uh huh.
What is, what constitutes training?
Um, if you guys register for a conference, if we bring somebody in. So conference registrations are considered a training.
Okay.
And we had a budget.
And again, like if we were to bring somebody in to do some training with you guys on something specific.
Resort tax.
Whatever.
Yeah, I meant, whatever, I meant, that's, that's what that fund, that's what that line.
And we, we had to adopt last year to amend, amend.
Yeah, we moved it up.
We moved it up because we weren't training.
A lot of these numbers are different last year from a bunch of now.
I sent a letter to Danny Beerswool, uh, or an email the other day asking, there's a, a lady who's a. Mediator slash educator on resort tax, just to see what, how much it would cost to have her come in and communicate.
So that wouldn't be a training session.
Okay.
We'd probably take that out of like a professional service.
Okay.
Type thing. Um, if she was gonna come and, and just do, you know, speaking at a meeting or.
Sure.
Or what have you.
Yeah, mostly to the public.
Supplies on court, that's.
Other purchase services, sorry, what's that bench?
Um. B M S is a biggie on that.
In general.
But again, Brittany, I, I'll have to pull a detailed ledger to remember everything. I'll asterisk that to do that.
I have that one, I have a, you have notes everywhere too. Okay. Um.
And commission projects historically, what is?
So at one point, but it hasn't always been in there, but last year. There was a resolution for the commission projects to go towards the Lions Club Park. For the flood.
No, was it the flood or was it, yeah?
It was the flood for this last one, and before that you guys had it for, in case you wanted to put towards the pollinator garden or, 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 or there was a little section for donated. Or if somebody asked for a donation or, but it went to the Lions Club repair. Gorge. Flooding, well, I don't know which time, but that's. Day four. So that's what that was, I don't know where it went in previous years, but. I saw it was available last year, I went, hey.
Heart bench is out here.
On city court for the compensated absences, how many employees is that?
Two, two, that's the judge and Suzie.
So in the first part, is that everybody except for water and sewer?
Uh, in admin?
Uh, yes.
No, that's me, Brittany, you guys, no, well, you don't have compensated absences, but, so it would primarily be me and Brittany.
Okay.
How much am I water sewer in admin, do you know?
I think you're.
Really?
I think you're three to water thirty sewer. I've got you in a couple different places. Yeah, I've got you in a couple different places.
You're talking where her wages come?
Yes.
So this. Random.
All of Suzie's is in.
Court and zoning.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, I, I'm sure you got these numbers from somebody else, but it's weird, I think in expenditures, what is it? Even sup, just supplies.
Only two hundred versus a thousand last year?
Uh, yeah, Art knocked it down and.
Okay.
Um, one thing was he was, he was buying different, helping John Woods, Art helping buy.
Uh, oh, with, with his budget in four years?
Last year.
Another TV, the computer last year, um, the computer last year.
And those came out of that, in the supply, so.
So, right.
I just didn't wanna be like, uh, sorry, you don't have that, cause you said two hundred bucks and now you're totally unlocked.
He did throw that down, cause he said he's done with that kind of spending, cause he's, I think he spent what he.
Yeah, we upgraded the technology, we're good for another five years.
Membership and registration makes sense, telephone and television makes sense.
Where's the insurance go so much?
Liability insurance increased this year.
On the court itself?
Overall, oh, I'm gonna see a increase across the board. Yeah.
Shocker. Jury services, that makes sense, alright, next page.
And when you, on these new ones where you see a two twelve computer, uh, I have to do new computer this year, so it's broke out between five different.
Sections.
Yeah.
So on this page, who would, for general, who's under compensated?
Um, you're talking about financial services at the very top?
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty much me. No, that is me.
Okay.
I don't think I put Brittany in there, but I might've put ten of those in there, I've gotta look, cause we changed, switched hers around a little bit.
Does the audit price increase every year?
The, I'm sorry, Christie, the what?
Audit price?
The. Accounting and auditing?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there are percentage increase annually.
Why did it say so? Fifteen, 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 like it stayed the same and then.
Where are you at?
Accounting and auditing, three fifty-three. I have my ruler. It looked like it stayed the same across until.
Right, so with new Gatsby laws coming in as well.
Okay.
There's, there's extra work dealing with Government Accounting Standards Bureau rules.
What's, you, oh, Black Mountain Software.
Just coming up with.
Black Mountain Software, I got that one, no, I got it.
Oh yeah, the B M S?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Those are annual fees.
Are you payroll too?
Yes.
So, four, one, one, zero, 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 planning, planning and research services, that's, that would be the account that we would pull for.
Um, not for the planning department, that's gonna be for anything outside of, um. It's not for planning board, it, it is if something else comes up, um. That the town needs an engineer for or a consultant or what have you, so, no, so it's not dealing with planning.
Or even like specifically zoning, or is this where, where we were calculating forest?
No, no, that's in the, he's gonna be in four two oh five.
Yeah, that's right.
So that really isn't, it's just an unknown Cory, it's there in case we need the service.
True.
Uh, nothing planned at this time for it that we're aware of.
Right.
That's a change in story.
Right, that's like we have, we have different task orders, like with Great West, right now a task order is the P E R. Um, but say you want, you guys want something. Um, a certain section of the master plan looked into to see feasibility or whatnot, that would be a, something that you may bring them in, in, under another, for another task order. To look into. So, yeah, with that, I mean, there's nothing planned right now.
Well, we, we talked about revisiting the master plan and that's where we came up with that, cause we said we were gonna revisit that and we might need something then.
Are you under payroll services?
Planning.
So payroll services, the salaries and wages increased?
Three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars.
And the expected on last year's was. Almost six thousand, but it went up to nine thousand? Whose wages went in there that it increased so much?
We had ninety-one, it was eighty-seven, so it basically went up a thousand?
Yeah, it went from forty-three.
I don't see where you're seeing forty-three, sorry.
Or fifty-three, or fifty-four, sorry, oh my god.
That, that was a year before, not last year's.
I know, but it increased three thousand, so what? Cause that's not what.
Between twenty twenty-one?
And twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two goes to eight thousand.
I'm gonna have to go back and look, Christie, cause I can't answer that.
Cause the, what it should've been on.
No, I see what you mean.
Yeah, I don't know why it went up so much, anyway.
I got it.
Between twenty-one and twenty-two, really?
Right.
Cause we didn't really, who else on payroll services?
That's just me. So I'm gonna have to go back and look.
My guess would be that it was because town hall was closed during COVID.
No.
No, no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't change it. No, I'll, I'll have to go and I'll run in, go in and look at some reports and let you know.
Just look at that one. And then.
So legal services, is that Greenlaw?
Civil.
Yessi.
Civil for the, okay. No, so that's not really.
That art thing?
Legal.
Greenlaw and, um, Warren Thane.
Yeah. Facilities.
And is that Eric?
Yup.
Well. All of Eric's guys.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that one goes down a bunch.
Yeah.
We switched them up a little bit.
Okay, different funds, different money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that's.
There's not, not another employee, um, on the horizon?
There is two more. From this point on, I just plan on, you know, one full-time guy that's summer. Trying to hire somebody to promote.
Yeah.
So that. What does two mean? Two on the horizon? You would prefer to have two or you need just one?
I need two.
Well, one part-time.
So it's full-time, one part-time?
I need one more full-time.
And then a part.
Oh, you are?
Yep.
Who's name?
I have this one out today.
Who's name?
Sean.
Sean is sleeping.
Where's the urine?
Just. Options.
More money.
More money, more problems. Way bigger problems. It's come with housing? What's this?
Sorry.
Sharing maintenance.
Supplies, supplies.
Their guy quit too, so they're down.
And we usually keep that Nikki at that.
That guy quit? Uh, what's his name?
I've been so, I can't get hold of him.
Who?
Duke.
Yeah, Duke. Is that Gilman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Services. Are we to the next page, two of?
Yes.
Three of thirty-five? It's gonna be a long day. Other purchaser, okay, what did we do there? Three nine oh, other purchase services. Whatever it is, we ran out of money in it.
Would be that, would that be like the people that have helped fix the water lines and stuff like that?
No. Because they're, that's. That's another one. I'm like, I don't know what we were thinking there. I think since we drag this out from March, when we start working on this, it gets a little.
Fuzzy?
It gets way fuzzy.
Alright, I got it marked, I'll check it.
Okay.
And insurance doubled because of all the claims that we have, is that right or what?
Um, in that, in this case, it's not just liability, it's property and liability insurance on that last line, Nikki.
Oh.
So the liability insurance went up, it, I think you have the numbers off to the side in the page, yeah.
And property on just like everything on the townhouse?
Yeah, that's, the property's gonna be like this building.
Okay. And the library and.
They, they all have it in their own funds, yeah. It'll be broke out into.
I T. What's that? Data processing and I T, oh, okay, nevermind. Nevermind. What about other purchase services in I T? Where did he go? He's like, I had a heat stroke and I left. I don't know what that one is.
I'm not sure because I don't.
What would, other purchase services in I T?
In I T, that's all the equipment.
Okay.
Oh, no, other purchase services, sorry, that's all the antivirus, uh, software and subscriptions were required to have by mistake.
Okay. Insurance, holy buckets.
So other purchase services includes all town, uh, not the P D, antivirus software, webpage, domain names and the S S L certificate for the webpage.
Okay. Hmm, machinery and equipment, what were we? What was the goal with that one?
One I T, so that's, so that is general I T, equipment, U P S battery replacement, um, Wi-Fi and infrastructure maintenance and repair, um, you know, some of our equipment's hit. Uh, roughly five years old, so it's sitting in the life, so I cycle that stuff through, um, to make sure that we don't have any issues with anything working.
So we didn't have data processing last year? What is that? Oh, data processing is the, the, we didn't have it last year.
So the data processing is the email workspace, I think. Is that where you put that, Ginger? Okay.
Yup.
I just have question marks on my sheet where I have my notes. Because I didn't know how to come up with that.
Okay, oh, sorry. We don't have this one.
I don't have that. I'm not privileged enough to get that one.
Oh, yeah.
Ginger ass, I told you, don't waste the paper.
It's ten cents a page.
Police department hiring?
Yup. So Matt, once he gets off of probation, part of his hiring is, is he gets a good bullet resistant vest that's custom fitted for him, not just a generic fit. Um, and he gets, uh, so that's, and that's pretty much taking up a good portion of that and that also sits there in case he decides to quit and he hires somebody else. Because I'm required to do a psych interview, required to do physical, I'm required to do a written test by state.
Of the hundred and nine on salary and wages, how much of that comes from the mills? Do we know or? Uh, is that where the mills will come in?
They've got the fifty thousand in those voted mills, but I have a written permissive mills, it should be voted mills.
Oh, okay.
And the rest of the salary has been there previously because that's what we had above an officer and a half budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the five thousand from the school that comes.
Yeah, the five thousand from the school, I just put it in my fuel budget just because what gas prices are right now.
Other purchase services?
So other purchase services, it was when you guys approved my budget to go for the mill levy, um, I had the list that I gave you with it. So it's, uh, basically all the equipment that we use for like the dry gas standard, which we're required to have for our P V Ts. Uh, Zerker records management that we share with the county, we have to pay our portion of that. Uh, the annual radar certifications to keep our radars good, uh, N C I C and C G I N, which is our state computer access.
What do you, do you use that for fingerprinting?
What's that?
N C I C, do you use that for fingerprinting or?
No, N C I C is where we run people for traffic stops.
Yeah, the county doesn't even use the N C I C.
We have to pay, we have, we have.
You have your own and you pay, I know, but the county doesn't use it, so why are we?
Because we have access to it, we have to pay the state fee for it. So the county is our dispatch center, but we, we are accountable for all the records that we run.
Yeah.
So we have to pay for those. So we have, um, so we have to pay for the records management through Zerker to have a portal that goes to N C I C. And then we have to pay the state per transaction, uh, for that we run. It's like point zero one two cents per transaction. But the state still bills us out on that. And we, we're responsible for that. Uh, we have computer warrants that we have to do because that's the electronic warrant system that we've gone to, that all the judges have gone to, so we have to pay for that also. That comes out of the other purchase services.
Land use inspection, what is that?
That's zoning, yeah. Few additions this year so that Suzie can go get some training and of course she'll have some travel in there with that. And have you talked about the contract with Forest at all?
No.
Okay.
So that's.
Um. And I did just note in there a fifteen K estimate.
Yup.
I think that's high, but.
We're not sure.
But we're not sure.
So, um.
That's for Forest?
Forest. I contacted Forest and asked him if he would continue to contract on. With us for like an on-call planner and so.
So not great. Wasn't great, wasn't not our planner though.
Not.
It was the planner before.
Cushing Terrell was on, on fall, it ends September one with Cushing Terrell, so, so we were open for.
And so while it's, uh, Forest has been doing most of our stuff, all of it's been built through Cushing Terrell. We didn't want to step on your toes, Forest contacted them and they are perfectly fine if he just. Goes direct, so we're working on a contract direct with him. And in that part of that, he's, for like the conditional use permits. Permit, some of the bigger beefier ones, the annexations, hospital ones, some of those ones.
If we have a subdivision come in, I mean, he'll help planning board, but zoning also will have some involvement in that.
So that's kind of.
When you guys set up the new zoning fee and like instead of it's built back, is that going to be, is Suzie's time going to be tracked on that as well or just?
We have to figure out how we can do that.
But definitely Forest, he already does that.
Yes, he, he breaks down his projects like once Cushing Terrell gives us and he breaks it, his part down by which project he's working on. So that's how that'll continue with his. And then, except for like if you have him in training or some of that. And then when the planning board is initially getting started, he was going to attend the meetings and kind of work their way through it. And he said he would stand on for part of working towards our growth policy, which needs updated. So we can start chiseling away, instead of doing it all in one year, we can piece a little bit together. Instead of having one large twenty thousand dollar or whatever.
Last addition to the land use inspection is that, that again, we're calling it the data processing services. Um, is for zoning board of adjustment emails.
Yeah.
So that's that final number on that.
Is the planning board going to have email?
Yes. And I.
Makes sense. So all these.
The problem is we're now getting public records requests, right? So especially in land use, that's a thing. And cell phones during meetings probably shouldn't be a thing because at any point, if you're, you might be Googling, but somebody can say, well. I want to know what they were doing.
And the judge will order that to be handed over. There's tons of case law. You, as an elect official, are using your cell phone during a.
Can't Google or look at Montana code annotated or the emails?
That's why, that's why the Chromebooks are coming as another.
They will literally, they will literally hand you the, the subpoena that says turn over your phone.
So to protect you from losing your phone, because I'm very attached to mine, I need it for life. For business life, it's, if I had to lose it for a week, I'd be, and it probably wouldn't be a week.
So all the telephone and telegraph and all these departments.
Is pretty much landline.
They're very high.
I mean, my landline at the shop is a hundred bucks a month.
And we're, we're actually working on a new phone system. Um, once the budget gets approved, it will save us a significant amount of money.
So these are old numbers?
Yup, that's not based on the new system.
Yes, it will save us a significant amount of money, but I don't know exactly how much this can do if buying new equipment. But what we're paying right now is absolutely ridiculous.
We pay for one, one line just for the, like, nobody ever answers the phone there, but we pay for an entire line.
And if the P D's telephone telegraph is all our cell phones, we have to have wireless data connectivity in our car, so those are the hotspots in the car. So our cell phone and telegraph is our cell phones and our data and, and all the data, we're required to have a secure connection to the state. So we have to have very specific equipment, uh, cradle point modems, uh, in order to be able to pass that data securely.
Okay.
So is that a phone system away from, what is it right now? Is it three rivers?
It's three rivers.
So what system are we picking up?
So it's gonna be Ubiquiti's phone system. Uh, we already have the server upstairs because that's what we use for our cameras and all our internet. Uh, so it's a very simple transition to it. Um, it's nine.
Nine ninety-nine?
Nine ninety-nine per line per month, but you have unlimited use on each line. So literally ten people could be using one phone line to call out at the same time and it's still nine ninety-nine a month. So we're gonna, we're gonna do three lines coming in for that, which will save us, we will be half of what we're paying right now. And, uh, we can also do it, Eric's got one and that will be the general budget, that'll be his, he has one out of the sewer doing it. We already have internet out there, we already have a connection out there for all the, the data to transfer. Um, so we can just plug that right in and connect him right out there too, so he'll, he'll be able to call out on one of those lines and it won't cost him anything extra other than the adapter box, which is like twenty-nine ninety-nine. Uh, the new phones are what's gonna, it's what's gonna hit. Um, Ginger and Brittany will get the really nice ones with the big screens, they're a hundred seventy-nine bucks, but it's a one-time fee. Um, and then everybody else will get the hundred thirty-nine dollar phones. So it'll, it'll save us the first year, we're probably gonna break out even. Um, but then the next year, we will save a significant amount.
Half of what we were.
And the, the phone system will allow us to line transfer calls, so literally if you call and hit the P D's extension, it will go to one of our cell phones. So you, so we don't have to come in here and check our voicemail because the way Three Rivers has it set up, we can't even check our voicemail remote. Yeah, and they won't let us, Brittany, touch the phone system because we're under contract with them, so they, every time we want to make a change, they have to come in and make that change.
Which is why when you call as a Three Rivers person, that it's on the voicemail.
Yeah, it, it took, what, how long did, from when?
Like two months.
Two months from when I called. I called one day over here and it went to the voicemail and it said Patty for ambulance, Kelly for. And it took two months to get somebody down here to change the voicemail to the appropriate.
They will not give us the, the access code to get into the system, so, because we're under contract with them because it's their phone system. So therefore, no, we're, we're going to something we can manage and we can.
To change the voicemail.
Still need the voicemail, by the way.
Can we break the contract to make a change?
We're not under contract with them anymore. It's just, all it is, is it's just their equipment that we're paying. We're paying them once we lease a month on them.
Well, do we need to add a line for data for the planning board emails?
I believe it's probably under the planning board, which is twenty-two, it's on twenty-two fifty, and the emails are in there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So that new tab you have to build for communications because of the.
We're getting there.
It's not gonna increase the one on Conley, is it?
No, the one on Conley is actually gonna go away this fall.
Oh, God, I get my key back.
Uh, so we're actually, well, it'll, it'll be about four foot above the roof, that's about it. For those two, for the lower small antennas on our Conley, those will still exist. That big stick up top, that's going bye-bye and disappearing. Um, that's part of the changes that we made. But the issue is, is so when they build the, the house, the stuff up on North Forty, um, the roof lines are just so high up there, they're blocking the signal from the North Forty.
We lost like.
The North Forty connects to our water tower.
Yeah.
And so the water tower, we have to have that data coming back down there.
We lost like.
And so in order to be able to get the data from there over here, we need to get up about a hundred twenty feet higher than the antenna is out here on this side of the building in order to clear those roof lines. In order to do that safely, we need a tower to do that. And Eric, Eric and I have already talked about it. And Eric, Eric and I have already talked about it, we've got a good plan to, to make that happen, you know, so it'll, it'll look good, it'll work extremely well. Um, and we shouldn't have any problems in any time in the near future, once we do that. Unless you guys change the instructions.
Did we? Did you ever look into the other site for that and see if it was?
I haven't been up there yet, but yeah, we're, we're, we're looking to see if we could, the old water tank site, if you guys don't know where that is, it's up on Animal Meadows. Um, I can actually do, we might be able to not have a tower in place fall, if I can do a solar powered one up on top of there. If we have a clear line of sight down here, but I don't know, I haven't been up there, like you don't, house in the way.
I don't think so.
I, I think that house is in the way looking in on the satellite.
I think that house and that hill just behind.
Like road and streets. Wait, okay, this is weird for you.
Yeah, I.
The gas oil and diesel.
Put up ten feet, it might be okay.
Yeah, she left it the same way, we went a hundred eighty-five.
As long as it's not house, but I'll look at it. Um, if, if not, I've, um, I've already planned to see if we could. To possibly use uh their bus barn uh for an antenna array, or a small antenna array and see if they will be willing to work with us for that. Um, because that has a clear line of sight, I don't think the rodeo grounds are going anywhere anytime soon.
So does that need to get over?
We gotta figure that one out.
It can change.
Okay, we got, we have to increase or find a way for, um, I'm on road maintenance and street maintenance. Four-three-oh-two-four, line two-thirty-one. Cause we went way over. And gas, I don't see going down anymore, so we have to find magic number for that.
Maybe it's in the battery.
You know what, if you look at, i- if you actually look into your electrical, I think that we could.
I'd probably move that.
At least partial. I meant, it's twenty-five hundred, we spent twenty-five hundred less than what was budgeted.
An electric and utility?
And we're in electric utility services, budgeted nine, only spent sixty-four.
Okay, so can we bump those around? Eric, any objections?
What's that?
I'm looking at.
In your gas.
Yeah, that's gonna go up.
Yeah, we gotta readjust that.
We need to adjust that.
To six?
Let's go six on that.
Yeah.
And.
And then take down.
And then other purchase services was hardly used, Nikki.
Other purchase services.
So if we bump other purchase services down to a thousand, Eric.
Fifty-four.
You only used forty-five dollars. And thirteen hundred the year before that.
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
So there's a thousand of it. And if we leave the electric, um, road and street maintenance, what the electricity is there, it pays for the streetlights.
Yeah, you have to leave that.
Um, but I don't think it's gonna go up, not that much.
So if we do eight there, is that's another, or?
Seven, are you on the electric utilities?
Yeah, seven, I think.
Seven there.
Then we've got the coverage for the six thousand in fuel.
Okay. And then insurance and then.
Right, so in there, we, in the ma- repair and maintenance supplies, which was two-thirty, there was thirty-six thousand in there. And, um, we determined from what Eric was able to get done this year. And the monies that'll be coming in, in the gas tax monies, both of those, and the street maintenance district. He would still have ample money to get supplies, whether it be gravel, some more asphalt.
Yeah, use it on the gas tax instead of here.
And we moved it down into the machinery and equipment for the dump truck.
Dump truck snowplow.
That's where also Laura is talking about that thirteen thousand coming out of water and sewer from, um, the street bonds. That we've been holding, that, that will come into this amount although, so that fifty-six thousand. The thirteen thousand will come into general fund and it'll be, it's earmarked for that truck. Does that make sense? Solid waste is a set fee from the county. Weed control, um, that's kind of an Eric thing.
So.
Do we need to do a tr- training travel? Do we need to? Cause you have to get it.
I'll be getting this winter, is the license for weeds.
Yeah.
I think it's a free class though, isn't it?
It is a free class, it's a thirty-five dollar license, something like that yearly, but.
We've got that, the membership and registration.
Normally they're pretty good about giving us the.
Chemical.
Yeah.
All right.
But that, that's something that's gonna be, hopefully.
It's a low budget, it's still, it's still a low budget thing for the town.
I mean, I could.
John, is there, and I, we're going into animal control. And is there any place right now that is taking animals if they're picked up?
So I have to drive all the way up to Heart of the Valley in order to drop off any animal that I pick up here.
Okay.
How, how frequently does that happen?
Not very often. Usually, usually I know the dog or you can find the owner of the dog right there. But we don't have a cattle facility, we don't have a place to put them. Um, and with uh the vet of year close, and I used to have a standing area, it would come right to the stage in the back, they take care of them. Um, and we pay them if we need to, if, if the person was not found.
It's so good.
Person.
It's like extra buttery and extra quality, so I love them. I'm zucchini, so I kind of feel like I have a vegetable. Okay.
How many did we have plowed that I can go out here, huh?
That I dropped off?
Yeah.
So when the vet's office was open, we dropped a lot of, because we didn't look real hard for the people. We just picked them up, took them up there and let them find them and then they would charge them for, he was a moneymaker for them essentially. I didn't write a ticket because I felt it was double hitting them if I wrote on the ticket and they had to pay the cattle fees. So, you know, they just charged them their cattle fees and I'm, you know, I have no, you know, no harm in the foul. But so ordinance says I can charge them up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars if I have to transport the dog. So they will get a ticket if I transport the dog, like who belongs to. Because that's taking three, three and a half hours out of our day to go up and do that.
Do we not, do we not have to do like a public service announcement for this capital improvement, like buying the truck? Or do we just approve the budget?
That's not at a capital improvement.
So, so Cory, they significantly increased the amount of dollar amount that you don't have to go out and bid, I think that's what.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
I believe it's eighty thousand now.
It is, so they went out the way they was long, you know, spent eighty for eighty thousand.
Otherwise you had to get whatever garbage came your way.
I'm like, I'm sorry, who's truck? That's pretty much trash for four grand today, I'm like, whoa. That's like the back of shit, we gotta go out to the.
Uh, senior under, who owns the senior center?
They do. They do, do they? We.
Used to give them five thousand.
For years, we, uh, you know, uh, I thought of housing them here for nothing for all those years. Then for five years, we gave them five thousand dollars.
Plus we get taxed through the county that we have to give taxes back to that. So when they, yeah, when we said no to that, they were here fighting, it was like, oh.
And they came in every year asking for additional money to run their operation. On top of the five thousand, I'm saying one, no.
So anyway, yeah, but no, we're, we're out of that business, Cory.
Yeah, okay.
Parks.
The devils.
Did we, oh, I was like, we had to have gone over somewhere, yeah, we did.
Fuel and repairs and maintenance.
That's because of.
The gorge.
The gorge.
Right.
So we're not gonna have that this year.
Do it, everybody, everybody knock. Like I can't do it again.
We'll say this though, we still need some diet prepared.
I'm like, oh, but thank God, this could have been way worse, like thank heavens for everybody that went and did what they did.
We still need some diet prepared.
And just a suggestion, that maybe some of that consultant money would be good for, but I think we can get it for free actually. Is I think you need to revisit the Lions agreement.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty loose.
It's horrible.
It is not a good.
And it's amazing that we have.
She said that they didn't have to ask for permission for that.
But there's a budget item, but if you walk down there, that the park is solely finally funded by donations to the Lions Club Park.
And the sign that says exactly that.
There's a sign that says that the Lions Club Park is solely funded by donations to the.
Yep, we're into a little donation cup, so like down there, take a look, when you go down, there's one on the bathroom, there's one on the little, uh, the little house over there.
On the line at the bottom of this page.
Oh, I have seen that one. Okay.
You know, and I don't.
Shouldn't be that long.
You can't live with it too.
It told you some numbers would change.
It was a rough one.
They should match up though to last years, because the numbers shouldn't have changed every year. Like this one would be different, but.
Gas utilities.
What are you guys looking at then?
Last year's budget to this year's, I'm just like asking a question about, none of them match up.
That's weird.
I don't know, Kristy.
Okay.
I don't know.
You, you brought one of the old ones?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have that.
I'm just double dutying.
I have like twenty of them.
I don't have any space, you gotta, you're.
I'm sorry, I'm just rolling.
It might be a post.
It's bad, isn't it? I'm like, oh my God, I really am.
Even think these would be the same, the past years would be the same.
Gas utilities.
I can understand this one being. I was just wondering.
Don't make, I, I got nothing to do there.
Propane for Lions Club?
Yes.
Yes, for the.
Is it a new thing?
Nope.
No.
It has propane tank, that's where it heats the water and.
They, no, I'm just kidding. Sorry.
One to five.
No wonder he called.
I mean, it's not running all winter, but it's chill off when you open it up and it heats.
I'm not gonna make funny right now.
So it's October, you need to turn that heat on.
Yes, sir.
So I get, are they talking, do you want the town to put in that extra six hundred forty-three dollars? Are we talking rest area? Don't we have to?
I don't see what we can cut from.
But you have to cut something.
I know, but what do we cut from?
I, I, since it's our guys that go down and do the maintenance. Um, I think we're asking for more expense if we don't like with the propane and, you know, keep a little heat in there. The only thing is the insurance, that's, that's not unrefundable or not, they won't reimburse that with the grant money.
Okay, so that's.
And the cleaning lady still, in my opinion, doesn't make enough for what they have to deal with.
Absolutely.
Not.
So it has to stay. Just.
Yeah, if possible.
That's horrible sometimes.
There's some.
There's a reason Suzie quit doing it.
So can't we?
Bad shit down there.
Can't we?
Thank you for going down after the Brew Fest though.
Cover that after, general, can, can we cover that out of general?
Cause I asked him.
Yeah, we would have to, Kristy.
Nobody said nothing to me.
Okay.
I got a call at six o'clock that night.
Oh, wow.
I think when they put events there, they should have to handle the bathrooms and the trash.
From now on, I'm just gonna lock the doors, it was bad.
And they, they were required for Brew Fest this past year to bring down porta potties down here.
And, and they did.
They were supposed to have them down there and they did have some down there, I don't know if they had enough.
They had, they were contracted for four, they dropped off two. That would have been probably the moment where you go, please, Public Works, be notified, we are two bathrooms short.
Yeah.
Cause they, they planned for four, but they got.
To handle trash.
I'll put on their permit, I'll make sure it goes on their permit next, next go around, that they have to supply enough bathrooms for their.
There was a toilet paper dispenser that was on the wall.
What?
Yeah.
I will be locking those doors next time.
Oh, hell yeah.
You ever put a condition in the contracts when they want to put those things on down at the Lions Club?
Yes.
That's what we should do.
You're responsible for all damage.
They are.
And make, and the cleanup.
That's why, they didn't leave all the trash though, they held it in.
Uh, Bruce Swans was down there and hauls the majority of the trash from the inside, and you guys only pick up one from the bathroom, right?
Right.
Yeah, he picks up all the trash all around there, um, all, all the ones, all the baskets that are out on the paths and stuff like that.
They helped with that morning. We had to go out there because the Lions Club called us and said, there's trash all over the park.
So the chamber didn't do their part?
No.
And that is a requirement though, because I put that on their permit every time, that they have to clean the parks to the.
Is there a fine in the ordinance, is there on the permit?
Well, we should deny the permit next time is what, is what's gonna happen. But I'm, this is the first I'm hearing of it and so we don't have pictures, we don't have anything else, unless you got pictures, Eric. So it'll be a little hard to deny a permit based on.
I do have pictures, but in fact, I have, I had to back up the back trailer to the bathroom door.
Just set the floor.
To even get to the toilet, to where I can fix it.
Well, yeah, we could, we can hold them accountable for that in the permitting process, but it's just something we need to be aware of when they, when they drop off the user agreement and everything from that. Uh, because they also have to do the liquor permit and everything, which I have to sign off on. So it's very simple to put conditions on those permits and say you have to do this.
I will.
I was wondering, because I hadn't seen any of those permits.
This was the first year, it seemed like it was not, this, it was not.
I last before it was all over.
Bingo. So this is the first time it was, thanks, so maybe it was a fluke, your delivery guy didn't drop off two extra bathrooms, but yes, we'll definitely.
And Marshall ran that last one, and I'll give Marshall all the credit in the world, he did, he, when I put stuff on that permit, he made sure it was a hundred percent. Um, so maybe it was a fluke, maybe it was something else, I don't know.
Because he was on his way out.
He was always on it when I had to.
I honestly think the big problems came from the bathrooms. People got angsty that there wasn't enough bathrooms and he had made arrangements for them. And they showed up right that day and were too short. He probably could have called at that point and said, hey, I'm short two porta potties, be aware, what do we need to do? Cause do I need to get somebody down there to clean the bathrooms in between or what? I don't think four was enough.
So I mean, and then.
That's great.
Even when they came and picked the porta potties up, they were.
So I would say, so I would say two on one end, at least four on the other end.
Budget.
I would say eight, four on one end, four on the other.
So how are we gonna make it work though?
I'll find it.
Text my kid, make sure she's in bed, just lay her right now.
So you're gonna text your kid to make sure she's in bed, so if she's anxious, you're gonna make her turn?
She's not gonna be asleep, no. She'll never go to bed at midnight.
Do I just address that for?
There's a please.
Check this out for you, okay.
I'm six forty-three.
Okay, thank you, six forty-three.
Last item on the bottom of this is in the front operating transfers out, so that ten thousand is what we talked about earlier. Um, for the PB card going to the CIP fund, which you'll see later is fund forty-ten. And the fifteen-seventy-seven, um, the Barca money that we get, which is the gas tax, the House Bill four-seventy-three, we have to do a match to that. So that is matching money out of streets into, um, that fund, which I think is twenty, they did, uh.
Okay.
Twenty-three something.
When we see it, we'll know.
Twenty-three.
Something.
Yeah.
Next page is the.
Library.
Oh, I have Western Transport Utilities.
It's, it's a scratch.
It's not a thing anymore.
That goes away?
Yeah, it's a scratch.
Okay. Library.
Back to Karen.
Okay, so I'm just gonna start talking and Scott, me if you have any questions. Okay, so, I'm just gonna start talking and stop me if you have any questions. Okay, so this, um. All right, so on, yeah, on this long sheet I gave you, the, the exact expenditures are spelled out. Salaries, compensated absence, it's me, employee contributions, office supplies and materials are exactly that. Office supplies and materials, um, small items of equipment cover our POS printers, uh, printers if they go out. Our large copier lease is paid by the Friends of the Libraries, so that's not included in there. Um, publications, telephone internet is a little high because I was going to increase our speed this year. But our cabling just got done, so that, so that's gonna be a little bit over this year. Um, so professional services, what's included there is Montana Share Catalog and, um. So that's a consortium that we belong to for database management and support for all of our users and database records. Um, OCLC are also records, a records consortium that we buy into, we couldn't afford to do it by ourselves. But that's why we pay into with the rest of the state, as well as Overdrive, that's a platform we use to supply eBooks. Doesn't supply the content, it's just the platform. Um, so that's professional services, training, we put fifteen hundred dollars in for professional development. Um, other purchase services, Black Mountain Software, Square, um, is our, uh, card reader plus website. Uh, Infuse Calendar, which goes from our Google Calendar to our website, so the public can view it. And then IT services, and that's, uh, that pays for when I have to call in help, if I can't handle IT. So it's virus software and, um, there's one thing I'm forgetting.
Your software to make sure that nobody screws with your computers, I think what you guys call it is that.
I'm working out on it right now, but if you'd like, call me tomorrow. So facilities, um, so we clean our own building, that's on there for the library board's behalf. Um, and speaking of, you know, bathrooms, um, on a smaller scale, we have, today, we had two busloads of people come through. We clean the bathroom once in a while a day, it's not just Lions Park, we do it ourselves, too. Um, and that's.
That's what makes us so busy.
Um, so, you know, we're the other public bathroom in town, so it's not just Lions Club Park, that, that bears the weight of that.
Big, yeah.
And are you finding that the women?
It's always that way, you not cleaning your mess, you know, otherwise.
Soap and toilet paper in my restroom, really, cause they will kite it. The soap stays in my office.
Yeah, we, we put everything in the back.
Swear. The bus people will steal your soap and your toilet paper.
Yeah.
Swear, you have to keep everything separate.
Yeah, we have to keep everything in the back room.
Yeah.
Um, and they are straight up slobs, um, anyway.
Is it, is it like? With knowledge that, that goes back?
All the business, I wouldn't say all the businesses, most businesses in town send their people to us, so that's why we're the other public bathroom, all the coffee shops.
I do.
So, anyway, going on, um, repair and maintenance, so repair and maintenance supplies. So, supplies are for the bathroom, services, if we have to call in plumber, electrician, et cetera. Um, so, all of that means, so the next box down, um. So you'll notice on our expenditure reports, we have quite a, quite a difference between income and expenditures this year. Last fall, when we raised salaries, we had a two-year plan to equalize that with cash balance. However, this year with insurance and salary increases, our increase is seventeen thousand dollars, with only a six thousand dollar. Income boost from the county, with the same amount that was from the town. So, that means that most likely, um, if we keep this, everything the same. Well, um, so this has not put us in a good situation for next year. So to, to put us in a better situation, most likely, we will lose half a position at the library. Um, and the trickle-down effect will remain to be seen, we may have to, we might reduce hours, program services, it just depends. But what that also means is an emphasis, direct emphasis on figuring out the best way to increase income for the library and the most equitable also. And it's not as simple as a town levy, um, because we have, we serve the county and the town. And those, and those costs are vastly different, so it's gonna take a little bit of studying. Um, so.
You're a lot like a park.
What kind?
I said, you're a lot like a park.
We're a service, we're, we don't make our, we don't make our own money, we, you know, we spend money, so it's a different, it's a different follow backs. Um, so, on the back, so this is what I. I'm not the author, cause I give reports to the county commissioners, so that hundred and four thousand dollars to the county, that's us, so this is what people get. Um, you know, for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, that comes to us. And we also, I just wanna also put in there that we also fundraise eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So that's how much it costs to run the library, is what we get in income, plus the twenty-five thousand dollars fundraised. But this is what we do, there's our stats, this is a, just a quick run stats for the year, um, you know, we're forty thousand people. Um, so, program attendance is over six thousand this year, and four thousand people used the community room last year. Um, so, basic service is the last service for the forty thousand dollars that comes from the general fund. Or the, or the twenty. You don't feel you're renting out the community room? So, we do rent it out for profit, um, it's, so we charged. They used to charge everybody for using the community room, and again, it's a public building, so that's a tricky area. We do charge everyone that comes in that makes money in that room, they get charged per hour for using that room.
Like when Brian Comickley rented it, or, or, is that what he did?
Like today?
Now, this was.
We did a campaign.
Where do those funds go, Karen? Like when you rent the room?
So, that rarely happens because people have figured out they can go somewhere else and not be charged.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So if they.
Why do you go and not get?
If they.
I know, I paid at the fire hall.
Like, you can't, we can't, we'd pay at the fire hall.
I don't know, so.
In the Lions Club, you can't use it without.
Yeah.
And the all Western charges?
So, people lose paywork, yeah. So, so it's, so it's from, it's, I think it's, our policy says it's fifty dollars an hour on that. Um, and if it did come in, it would just come in and I will put it into you. You know, and then, and the monthly bills. Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the problem, if it's fifty bucks an hour, it's fifty bucks to use their own.
Your non-resident cards are really negligible.
It is negligible, um, this year, uh, I'm actually working with Vicky Telstra to try to. So, they, even in a non-resident card, they pay more than a resident does for that period of time. So we charge non-residents more for the same services that county residents pay.
Efficient citizens, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ju- it is, though, like Karen said, that they're a service-based. They're service-based.
We charge for what we can, but we don't charge for everything because in our, in our local agreement, it says, you know, we are to be a free library. If we go against, you know, if we push that boundary too far, we lose cash.
Right.
Yeah, any questions?
Who do you, so you said you talked with Vicky Telstra, what's her position?
So she's the finance, financial officer at the county, she, she, that's where I go for all of our finance information. How much mills, you know, how much mills we get and how much each county resident pays for.
And would that be who you'd go to to get more money when you're talking?
No, that's a plan with the county.
Do, do you pay for waters who are charged?
No.
No.
Okay.
What?
I feel like you should.
Pay a lot for them every time.
Well, yeah, but.
So if that is ever part.
Some, to say, we should be.
Yeah, and if that's ever part of a plan in the future, we need to do well advanced.
Yeah.
Like, it's not.
Why can't you, like, make them buy a book on their way out, or, like, they just stuff over, a piece of candy?
No, you need, when they ask for the wifi password.
Yeah.
Would have to pay the lease.
Yeah, exactly.
Change the password to wifi.
Like the toll road charge on VC ranches, somebody put on Facebook that day, so you just start a toll. Because so many people that don't live there, cause of the few in-home businesses. Yeah.
So, anyway, so as a byproduct, so, right now, we're allotted, so right now, you've assigned six mills to us. Um, I'd like to just work with you in the future to increase that, continue to increase that money, you know, through different, through different revenues. So it's just a goal, like a goal.
I think we're actually able to charge for renting out movies, that'll be the new red box.
They are the new red box. No, I, I said, you should cha- you need to change the wifi password to please donate five dollars. And so when they ask for.
Do we need to do a bake sale this year?
We're gonna be more.
Just have, yeah.
Yeah, I'm on this case.
Get a resort tax.
Resort tax.
I will help you in that.
Does the library have to get money, library, please? Automatic return on your property taxes.
Alright. But maybe we didn't put the blog, we need to connect the blog, the NS. Cause I don't think I got it. Never mind, if you, if we're doing an event or something, maybe we need to coordinate better and send it to John, and he can put it on the town website for blogs.
What, what, sorry, I mean, the call, did you post it here?
The pie sale? We're good.
The pie sale?
Anything, anything.
Yeah, connect them a little bit more.
Communicate.
Where, like, we have the email that.
Brittany and I talked about that a little bit today, because, I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize that there was like a debate at the library today.
I didn't either, until today.
Until a quarter to one, I'm like, what's this?
Somebody pointed out Facebook, I thought it was a joke.
Yeah.
So we're like going to the debate.
I was driving back up here and I see all these Tranel, people with Tranel signs, and then I came back up and I, I looked and it was like.
Protesters, I got multiple calls on, on the, that were on the triangle here, that a bunch of people called in wanting to remove.
So, yeah, just for the record, the word it said in the papers, we were hosting it, sponsoring it, no, we gave them the space.
Space, yeah.
If there's any sort of, um, questions about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. Anyone can use the space, anyone can use the space.
So, both things that we will clarify, yeah.
Right? Good point.
Okay.
Planning board.
But it's there for. Cause I was like, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, you're good, okay.
Yeah, planning board, anybody questions, comments, we have the emails in there, consultants, if we need.
Ten of the fifteen is gone, that went to pushing Terrell.
That's that expenditure that we were talking about, the ma- the Main Street grant, that's where it is, in and out.
So there was money in this fund, even though we never really had a planning board?
No, this is, uh, we did last year, we put in professional services. And consultant services.
And we need one more.
We kinda, we kinda revamped, I kinda revamped the planning board for what we're gonna need since we're resetting it up.
That would mean that we have to pick another staff.
For these. Wait, is it Kristy?
Professional services. Ten thousand is about fifteen thousand. Is what I talked about, the grant money that we've already got, that's, comes in, goes back out.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
Sorry.
I skipped.
And then, of course, um, emails for the planning board, it's the twenty-one hundred for the year.
Emails are ridiculous, I wanna be Google. Can we do it?
We don't have to do government review yet.
I guess it looks weird, though.
PDRS is set on wages, based on wages, so that is what it is.
It's Google, the only way we can go for.
Same with health insurance. And that's the numbers, two pages. For health insurance, the health insurance and the permissive mill levies, those are added together to total, what total, um.
Sixty-three.
Health insurance will be for the year. I think it comes to like two twelve, oh four oh. I'm not. Where are you? I'm, we're on health insurance, twenty-three seventy-one, twenty-three seventy-two, there it is. The twenty-three seventy-two is the permissive mills that we can levy for health insurance. Plus, the cash that was, any cash that was left over. In last year, this, we could be subject to change.
What are you saying, is the total on that?
It's, our total for health insurance this year is gonna be like two oh twelve, oh four oh.
So, like, up a hundred from last year?
Last year, we had a hundred and nine, a hundred and nineteen, oh, it actually went down. And I just moved some, I had to move some numbers around, Kristy.
Oh.
Um, I did a journal voucher, so, anyway, I'll. I'll print you off the journal voucher.
Street maintenance assessment.
Yes, he's got a hundred and twenty-four eighty-eight in cash, plus he's gonna have more money coming in. So I wanted to relook at that.
Is that like the whole, the two thousand seven assessment, or is that what you're talking about, or?
Street maintenance assessment is the one, um, it comes through with county taxes. The seventy-five, like a seventy-five dollars per lot. Or vacant lots are either twenty-five dollars.
Is that a revenue? No. What are you talking about?
Street maintenance assessment, yeah, that's, that's the.
Street maintenance district, right?
Yeah, right. So, but they're sitting with a hundred and twenty thousand in cash. Plus, I think you're, they're gonna have another fifty thousand coming in, making it a hundred and seventy. So I crossed that out, wondering if we wanted to keep, if Eric wanted to keep that number and keep cash on hand at the end of the year.
What do you mean?
You originally gave me the ninety-five five ninety-two, duplicated it.
Right.
Do you want that to stay the same, or do you wanna change it? Since you'll have roughly, if you didn't spend anything, you'd have roughly a hundred and seventy at the end of next, this fiscal year.
I'd like it to stay the same, because a hundred and twenty is one road, you know?
Okay, got it, ninety-five five ninety-two, guys. It is gonna be on that line.
Take off of that hundred and twenty, correct?
Well, yeah, you're gonna have a hundred and seventy roughly, and you're gonna spend ninety-five of it. Ninety-five five.
Okay.
No. Do you want to spend ninety-five thousand five ninety-two this fiscal year?
Or would you like to spend more?
Yes, I would, that's, that's a road right there, I mean, that definitely.
So ninety-five.
You know.
Five ninety-two, okay. Then the next year, you can have a bigger project.
Yeah. Some major stuff, yeah.
On page eleven, under health insurance, we've got payroll services, but on the first, like, admin, for the top one, is that? Right, or, or am I reading that?
Eleven?
Eleven, page eleven. All the employer contributions and indirects under table. That.
Um, yeah, so that is where, yeah, yeah, that's where it comes.
But then first is under admin.
Yeah, with the bar's chart of accounts, that's where they had health insurance set.
Library trust fund, is that the page I'm on? Library trust fund, is that the page I'm on, fifteen?
Um, yep, that's the one we had talked about before, that Karen said leftover money from when the library was.
Yep.
And I typically budget the cash that they have at the end of the year, just in case an emergency comes.
Yeah, so she's, what, she's still with that?
Um, the police pension is the money that I told dude comes in from the state, John asked to, for five thousand this year. What's that? No, this is for training.
Car was back there, they did ten and seven.
Um, this is strictly state money for Nikki that gets used for, that has to be used for training.
Okay.
Um, they could do, um, training supplies. But yeah, it's, it's limited.
But that comes from the state, right?
It does come from the state, so it, it often is so.
Yep.
Gas tax fund. This is the regular one where we get like the, um, this year we got like the twenty-seven thousand coming in annually. So it's got, um, it hasn't been used for a while, as you can see, until Eric got a hold of it. Eric spent some money. Um, but anyway, so. I just budgeted the same as last year, he said that would, that would be ample. Same with, um. This is the second set, the second gas tax that comes in.
That's not.
No.
Yes.
It is?
This is bar stuff.
I'm good with.
It, it's that, I mean, that's, you don't.
You know, this would be far less complicated if there weren't. Well, I mean, it would look so intimidating if.
Corey, we're clear back to tree fund, and I budgeted all the cash that you have. Are you good with that? Tree fund. It's page twenty-three.
Bunch of these are like, um.
See, it wasn't that bad, we spent all much.
Yeah. And, yeah, no, that sounds good. I have, I have one project I'm gonna bring up was Habitat for Humanity House. That they're having trouble getting complete right now.
So what's going on?
I don't wanna spread any rumors, I honestly don't know, they're just not getting things done, I think the individual. Well, I, I talked to Nellie the other day and she said she had a bunch of volunteers, um, like lined up, but they couldn't get contractors to come down to. Do anything, so they're having trouble getting the, sort of contractors to come down. She had volunteers and stuff to, to try to help out, so she's a little frustrated with that.
Sure.
And what does this have to do with the tree fund?
Oh, just putting, putting trees in the yard, that was, uh.
Oh.
It was just, uh, a use for.
Think we can probably raise donations for that.
Sure.
Is my thought.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think, yeah, I think if we started doing that, Corey.
Then it's like slippery slope.
Slow.
Yeah, I think, I think we might.
Don't do that, don't do it.
But a nice thought.
I would, but I would certainly, I would certainly help with.
Fundraising?
Yeah, or looking, looking for tree donations to back.
Easy for Ellie to get trees for her yard.
Yeah.
I think, I think doing a lot of people's, whoever's seeing your lawn, you can bring it up, I bet you, I bet you you walk out of there with enough trees that you couldn't even see the house.
Did you leave the house now?
Well, okay, wait. Two three five five. Nevermind, I'll talk to you about that later, I think there's one here that's gonna die. I know there's one here that's gonna die.
Triangle that needs to be replaced.
The one out here is not long. For life, but there's no point in putting him in if we.
Okay, this brings us to the ARPA funds, this is weird, um, it really, it really is kind of weird. So, um, as it sits right now, there's a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars in the fund. With the anticipated, and I think at this point, all we can anticipate is the county's two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That leaves four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seven, two hundred and ninety-three dollars to be budgeted. And.
Wait, wait.
I wasn't making that decision.
Four oh seven, two ninety-three was, well, we said the water purse and the wastewater purse were gonna come out of that, they're available to come out of that.
I've been painting them from that.
Yeah, so the.
But we also had that, we also had that transfer of sixty-three thousand some, in from water and sewers matching funds. To this.
And the new sign was gonna come.
Okay, so, but that's where we need, yeah, we need to set those things up for budget.
Can some of that go to the lion's club cleaning, no?
How about the library?
No.
No. It's restricted, it's restricted on.
Infrastructure.
What you can spend on.
Basically.
What about your stuff that we've been doing?
Yes, that's why I said, like, it's, it's to, when we get the O'Keefe drilling.
Right.
Bill, that will go through, the water, w- what, we had forty thousand and eighty thousand in those two purrs. The wastewater's not gonna be done at all.
Delicated places.
Yeah, next year probably should say.
Yeah, like mid twenty twenty-three or something, so it may or may not come out of this, this round.
So it's just gotta sit there till what we.
We're just, honestly, just sit not.
And then we, and then if we needed, the well, mostly the wells is what we're.
What about the water tower getting fixed, can it come out of that?
Yes.
Yes, it can, and.
So I think we just spend that as, as stuff comes in.
And then it, we can also use it for hydrant replacement, and we've got, I don't wanna know.
And extra well.
That's, that's more than that's in there. And that, your well is more than.
Yeah, we're gonna be out of that, so that's matter.
Yes, like that's, the minute the well is complete.
The sign, when it finally comes in and the. Cuss with that, um. The generator for town hall can come out of there too.
Yes.
It was supposed to, when you brought it up.
Oh, we'll see if you like, see if you run our VOC, that can definitely.
I think you brought it up, when you brought up the generator coming out of ARPA fund.
Yeah.
Two years ago, year and a half, and the rest is in the water too. Remember some stuff?
Anything else?
Uh, what about, somebody kissed a woman over here, it sounds like, a lot of drama.
I would just put just the generator.
Yeah.
He says Fisher what?
Fisherman crying.
Oh, Fisherman.
No, Fisherman trying. Oh, I'm not crying. I'm, I'm.
That isn't, is the sign, which actually will be useful for water and sewer. And the generators are here, an emergency, and the rest is yours, so those generators can come out of your.
Generators are running. High daisies.
We're gonna have to hunt.
Does the generator come with an air conditioner?
No, and we thought about that.
Not feeling too bad here, you're right.
Talked about that, but I don't, I, I, I mean, it might be stressful going once.
Yeah.
A generator.
Can be moved.
Okay, that was, yes.
The size he needs, right? So I priced them up for here, and those guys have the, the pricing that we can get, but their problem is, is like the smaller ones that would run this building. There's six to nine months out right now.
Oh, we better wait.
She's gonna keep having sweaty balls, kids.
We need to do, figure out a way to put them in. Cause if it goes down for that extended period of time, we're going to be in a mess.
You do that, or you just have one in each location, I mean.
A portable one at each.
Well, it's similar to the one that's at the, at the.
If we had another one at the lagoon, we can drive that one around to whichever well we would like to use.
Okay.
The one at the lagoon, we can also use for columnar well, but the power's out, definitely no water.
Yeah, yeah, no, we need, but yeah, we'll find a way.
Gotta go, you know?
There's gotta be.
And I've been watching, because we, we used to be able to, and I brought this up before, we used to be able to get government surplus stuff, which was, I could've gotten three of them on a trailer. Two of them were working good, one, one, the third one's for parks, from DOD out of California, or DOD out of Utah, Department of Defense. Um, now you can't find those anywhere right now.
Nope. Should've wiped two K'd it.
And it is what it is.
Alright, uh, page twenty-six, questions, comments, I think we're good. That was the payment that's already pretty much.
That was the SID.
We had to decide where it goes, but it was already spent.
Well, we're already into the budget, I've made some decisions, so.
CIP fund. The only outgoing this plan at this point is for the PD car, if they have to replace it, or whatever they're doing.
Correct, good luck.
So it's fifty-five thousand.
What do we have, you have this here, um, that's what the library has, coming from others. Yeah, they have CIP. Oh, yeah, they're holding it for years.
Be careful because salt that they use in the roads and.
It's inspection, you can get somebody to physically look at it before.
They can ignore page twenty-eight, cause we don't, we'll have no, from SID behind. Then you're into water and sewer.
Eric?
Water and sewer.
Up on Eric, it's all yours.
Basically, this is all the money water and sewer has in this budget right here. So that is available for him to use.
Do you, do you have intentions to use it all?
No.
Right answer, no, I don't.
But if some comes and we need to use it, I want it there, that's why it's budgeted.
But we'd move some, didn't we?
We did move a few.
Because I wanted, some started moving. I, instead of making it that you used it all, and then there's this little magic cash pocket, we were moving some of it into. Long-term repair and replacement or cap, we didn't make it as a capital improvement. But I think we were trying to go, well, we've never actually used a hundred percent of some of these line items. Trying to remember where they were at, Ginger, where did we move those ones?
Which ones?
The, we said that we needed to actually create.
We haven't yet.
Okay.
But I can tell you that we're probably looking at, or, wait, 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 get on my pages.
We talked about that.
You guys moving?
So that you had, like, a long-term pool plant, so like, just like she's got for her computers. When you want a grater, start stashing money so that you have money for an entire new grater.
Just like we do with the choke car.
Yeah, we're trying to move money so that you have a bank account for, that says that we're actually planning for the future too. It doesn't make sense for, from my perspective, if I was a taxpayer, to say, you, you didn't plan for a grater? You, 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 you have grater from nineteen sixty-three, and you never planned to.
Get a new one?
Yeah, so we were just trying to make it look, well, not make it look, but actually plan for, we know that's not gonna last, oh, wait.
That would be, we need a grater and we also need cloud rock.
Um, I don't, I meant, we dropped this down. Three hundred thousand already.
But we were just thinking about like ten thousand, and from water, some, from, collectively from a couple little places in water.
Alright, well, give me some.
Like a little bit, just a little bit. Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You made ten thousand dollars out of water and sewer.
Well, for.
Each.
If we ever were to, we need a plan, this budget drags me nuts, and I know it's like. How somebody else, 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 else did it, but just saying, I'm gonna use all this, and then we don't use it, and there's this little cash pocket. While it's handy, it's not actually planning for. It's not earmarked to say that we actually have a plan and know that I would like a generator, or that I would like. The generators could very easily been in a capital improvement plan in the years and been budgeted for and done. Not, this is your first budget, fun too.
So you're taking ten grand a year from water and sewer?
To a cap.
You gotta let me finish.
Okay, okay, everybody's chill out.
Water in here, why? I don't understand why you wouldn't want all this money available to us.
You do, but you want that portion to be designated.
Do not, do not say you can't use it.
Use it, but, yeah, no, and, and by just budgeting huge amounts, I, I meant.
What's wrong with that?
Are, are you, like, just.
It's exactly what the Forest Service does, is then they bulldoze chainsaws. It, that's what it says to me, is that there is actually a surplus and a waste because you're not planning for the future. So we have got to plan for the future.
Actually, like, I'm only gonna use this much money for.
We know we're gonna over calculate and pad for some things that come up, but we've got to plan for.
Is that money reversible when you put it in CIP?
It's available for, it's available to spend if it's needed.
Which is not my decision.
It's, it's that, we can't take his cop my car money that we've been putting in, and then put it into a new truck for you. That is his money for his, and we wanna put one, we want your savings account, basically.
Eric, I've used my cop car money to buy a new camera for my car. I just had to add, I just had to tell the council what I was doing, okay, good, you're good. So I used it for something else, completely different, not for a car, I use it for a new camera system, cause they're fifty-five hundred bucks. So it's not like you can't use the money.
It's like your corporate savings account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do what you want.
That's the wrong answer.
Water, sewer, water, sewer.
That's it, water, sewer, that's it, what's, ambulance is not.
What was left there, though?
Aren't a lot of these numbers set by state already, don't we have to plug in like minimums or?
No.
Well, like, some of this, like, we're, you're never gonna take out of the salaries, you're never gonna take out of, you're never gonna take out of. Um, but like.
But the salaries, you're, you're figuring the Sally salaries for a year. You know, you know, now, Eric, if Eric hires two people, we're gonna have to do a budget change.
True.
Because that number is then going to change.
Yeah.
Because what I have in this budget is planned for three full times. Plus Brittany's time that's worked in there.
Right.
Plus a few percent out of, in mine. Um, so, I mean, yeah, so if we get, say we get a fourth person, I'm gonna have to go into all the, all the funds. And do that addition to add those additional.
Sure.
Wages, benefits, you know, the health insurance.
And the health insurance.
It's gonna change.
Changes.
And some of these people don't have families, whereas one leaves that had a family on health insurance, and the next one comes doesn't.
Right.
That'll always change.
So, yeah, I mean, that's another, you know, there's just, there's a lot of different aspects to look at there, but. But with what, with what I know Corey has to be there, I mean, I'm figuring. What they're gonna be for that year.
Right, sure. Sure, there's just a lot of, I think Eric's just saying, there's a lot of variables with everything that happened earlier this year.
You seen it, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and definitely there is, but we do have. But we do have budget change as. An option to us.
Right. Yeah.
Electric utility services. Who's gonna remain that night? Great. Where are you? Electric utility.
We do.
We're over there. I don't imagine it going under. Going less this year for water. Do we actually need to touch it more?
I actually. I'll mark it.
Or is that a, is that one? And when we do notifications, where does that come out of?
Well, yeah, but it's gonna be other purchase services.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that he's got room for whatever.
Well, that one. Another little over too, Nikki.
Where is it?
Did you do those emergency announcers? Yeah, yeah, no. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're still planning on. That one I wanted to leave more room for, because we're actually. Okay, so.
Gives you time to retract it in case.
Yeah, that one. There it is. Great, other purchase services there.
Okay, yep, I pegged it.
Okay.
Couple of these, Eric, that we used this amount, that this number was budgeted last year, so maybe we'll up this.
Okay.
To save the guests, like electric. This is what went out last year. This was budgeted, so we went over budget, so. That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and electric since impulse. I think that was electrical. Went over.
And did go up.
It did.
With, with the summer leagues in town.
Well, and like I said, both, both clubs have been working non-stop.
They've been cranking. Did you order, you ordered another one and it's not here forever?
Yeah, how many months?
It's like the generators, which is much worse, but, but they're also nine to, nine months off already.
You know, I, I promised fourteen thousand dollars last year. Thirty percent more.
That definitely. Okay, I don't see anything more of Nikki and water. That's.
Nope, that, oh, that's good.
Okay, transfers and stuff are what they are.
Yep. Sewer. Where are we? What, what, what am I, why can't I read?
Christie, I think I have the answer to your, why the wages changed. Was it in payroll so much? Cause I think that you, we have reevaluated my time and it got changed, but I'm still gonna check.
No, it's enter, enter for an operation transfer out. Five, twenty-one, zero, 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 zero. Any numbers on that one?
No, you asked about the recent payroll service.
Oh, yeah, there was two different questions. Yeah.
But that was one. Meaning like you recalculate how long it takes you or how much time you've spent on payroll? That's why I went.
And switch stuff around.
Yeah, right.
What is that? What's?
I think that may be it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at it anyway.
That's what that is. I was like, oh, we didn't use that one, but that needs to stay where it's at. Machinery and equipment per sewer. Yes, that needs to be, he needs that chunk available. Get it.
I don't see other ones, any, any.
Anything else looks good.
Good, cause it's backwards. Or sideways or whatever.
And then Mad Town's last one.
The Mad Town, uh, it's again, it is what it is. That I budgeted, I budgeted out for them. Um, for what cash they have on hand.
Okay, perfect.
That's what they like to do every year.
Somebody tell me it's not fall yet.
It's not.
It's not. I thought it was cold and rainy. Just hot and rainy.
Stupid.
I'll cover your head.
It just seems, you know, a big, uh.
Cool.
And your sewer collection and other purchases. Uh, collection. Yeah, so other purchases. I can't answer that.
I would just sweep and tip people off their chairs and get them in, like, hey, that's.
Billy, your turn. My son never brought me a coffee. I, that's. So, so what?
That's on.
You did want to say this.
Water off.
Oh, you didn't, yeah. I was hoping, yeah.
Work to do.
But it just seems like a jump.
Nikki holler if you see something else. All right, you guys, I wanna auction off the last piece of heat kitty bread for the library.
I don't want to eat some good.
Did anybody not get any? No, I told you I turned. I know someone. Oh, you're bored now or maybe. Come on, Jen.
That makes your brain for.
Hell, rain, wind, all of here too.
But twenty-two.
Yeah, right there.
No, my god!
Oh, those are, those are. Uh, Nikki might have.
I'm like, which one are you talking to? Now I know how it is, he feels with the other Isabel in her class.
Only that play.
No, I think that was an ice truck. Well, the first round budget, yes.
I mean, I wasn't really much to chew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sea pot, make me dinner, push it button.
I like your shirt, Randy.
Thank you.
I like your shirt.
Thanks again for all the.
Thank you. I ate too much.
It was so good.
Instant.